Okay, recall to order, reconvene, regular meeting of the...
Mic set off.
We're gonna get started. Oh, can you take attendance for me? I guess I didn't ask.
Sure.
Reconvene, school board meeting scheduled for 6:30. Paul, please take attendance.
All board members are present with the exception of Jennifer.
Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of justice for all.
Alright, we'll start with number four, administrative appointment. Do you have a motion?
I moved that the Board of Education appoint Lawrence Stroud Jr. as the principal of Bloomfield Hills High School with an effective date of February 7, 2022.
So, good evening. It is my pleasure to present Lawrence Stroud Jr., administrative appointment to the Board of Education as the principal of Bloomfield Hills High School. Lawrence comes with also 25 years in education, serving students, staff, and communities from multiple capacities. His professional journey began in 1997 at Castack High School as a math teacher and department chair. In 2009, he joined the administrative team in Plymouth Canton Community Schools as an assistant principal, serving at both Canton High School and Salem High School. In 2013, he was granted the opportunity to serve the communities of Farmington and Farmington Hills as both an assistant principal of Farmington High School and as a principal at Harrison High School. Lawrence's educational journey includes Castack High School, Alabama State University, Wayne State University, and he is currently enrolled in the doctoral program at Eastern Michigan University. He is happily married to his wife, who is a fellow educator, as the principal of Detroit Renaissance High School. Together, they have three wonderful teenage boys, which some of you got to meet tonight. Miles, who's 17, Dylan, who's 13, and Lincoln, who's 12. Raising these young men in today's world allows him to walk shoulder to shoulder with BHHS parents on the path of parenthood and allows him to see every BHHS student as his own. We are looking forward to working with Lawrence and welcoming him to the team on February 7.
Can we have the vote, please?
Call for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any comments? Alright. Congratulations.
Thank you, Board of Education. I humbly accept your appointment to this position as principal of Bloomfield Hills High School. It will be my honor to serve this community. My first job, job number one, is to get to know this community and talk and communicate with you guys and find out exactly what makes this community so great. So, thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to getting to meet and greet all of you, and let's go Blackhawks.
We take a five-minute recess for pictures?
Alright, callback to order. We're gonna move to number five on the agenda, which is public comment. I'll read the intro. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It is not a time for dialogue. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides that boards may place limits on the time allotment for an individual comment. In addition to making a public comment, you may also email the board at any time. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or a member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the role and responsibilities for which they are employed or served or is otherwise exempt from First Amendment protection will be excluded from public comment. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, please identify who you represent. Thank you for taking the time to address the BHS Board of Education. Howard, would you keep time today? We'll do three minutes, and we will begin with Ms. Paulina Hagopian and Mihaila Cobb.
Good evening. We are Mihaila Cobb and Paulina Hagopian, and between two of us, we have five kids in four schools in the district. We serve on numerous committees and groups and clubs, but we're here to represent PTOC tonight, and we want to acknowledge each of our trustees who currently sit on the Board of Education. We want to thank you for your dedication to hard work and thoughtful consideration for the betterment of our district, our schools, and our children.
We recognize the long hours and service you provide to Bloomfield Hills Schools. Please accept this token gift as a sign of our appreciation. Thank you so very much for all that you do.
Just want to say you may approach. Yes. Thank you, Paulina.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Rania.
Well, it's hard to follow that. I don't have gifts with me, but... Maybe next time. Alright. Good evening. I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to talk to you about my children's school, the International Academy. The IA is truly a Geminar community. My boys attended Eastover, East Hills, and now we are very fortunate that they were picked in the lottery for the IA. We had an option to attend Bloomfield Hills High School, which is also a really wonderful school in our community or a local private school, but we made the decision to attend the IA. IA didn't have the fancy building or amenities like other schools, but we really believed in its core values and in its academic curriculum. The tight sense of community, the diversity, the high academic standards are all reasons why we love the IA. And I remember after attending the curriculum night for the first time there, I was so impressed with the teachers that I really, I went home and I told my son. I said, "I wish I could be a student in your class. If your teachers would let me sit in on your classes, I would love to." And some of you are or have been IA parents, and I'm sure you know exactly what I'm talking about. With all the things I love about the IA, it saddens me to know that we can do better for the students. Coming from other district buildings, my kids immediately noticed a difference. Of course, there are also differences in, the obvious differences are in the building, but there's also differences in resources and supports offered to the IA. Even with their limited resources, the IA students and staff are high achieving, making it easy for their needs to be forgotten. We all know the importance of addressing student mental health. Unfortunately, suicide rates have never been higher. We need to do more at the IA to address our students' mental health needs. We'd like to create a zen-ten safe space for students, but we are desperately lacking the space for this. The current space used does not offer students privacy to collect themselves. Unlike the other buildings in our district, the IA does not have a social worker present to address student needs. Even a part-time or shared social worker is better than no one else. We have two wonderful counselors who are both brand-new and just starting to get to know our students. We also don't have a resource room to ensure we are supporting all of our students' needs. I'm grateful for the improvements of the building that were completed over the summer. So grateful. I was so excited that that was coming. However, it really took the district a long time to make those very basic improvements, and it worries me that any additional improvements will also drag on for too long. I'd like the Board to consider creating a long-term improvement plan for the IA. Our students need it. Parents like me have been doing all we can to make sure the IA gets the attention it deserves, but we need our board members to take on these larger scope challenges and create solutions. We need a longstanding plan that will continue to live past my time as an IA parent and past your time as a board member. We need to ensure the needs of our students don't fall to the wayside. Thank you so much for everything that you do for our students, and I can really commend your dedication to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rania. Next up is Adele. Sorry if I mispronounced her name.
Hi, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm a senior at the IA, and I went to middle school at East Hills. There is a significant difference in the resources available at IA and East Hills. Although they're both Bloomfield schools, they have major infrastructure differences. DIA has provided me with a great school community during my high school career, and I had the opportunity to build a relationship with my teachers and staff. As graduation comes closer, I'll surely miss my mentors who helped me throughout high school. When I first attended the IA, I was shocked to see how outdated the building was. The building was originally an elementary school, and to be honest, it still felt like this. Although I'm grateful that Bloomfield has provided us with renovations throughout the school, the IA is still urgently limited in terms of resources. I have visited Bloomfield Hills High School for school events and was amazed by the building. I truly believe that the IA deserves more than what they're receiving. I believe that the IA will benefit from a technology update or upgrade such as Chromebooks, furniture, or even lab equipment. Our classrooms are especially tight and sometimes even crowded. Thank you for your time, and please ensure that the IA needs are met, and allow students that come after me to benefit from continued improvements. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Adele. Next up is David.
I came here because I was at an event that happened a few months ago. I was sitting with a young lady beside me, little girl, going through a lot of chaos and pompous stuff going on, petty stuff in this district. Now, I'm not saying this isn't one of the safest districts I've been in, I live here. Police come in two minutes. So, that is great. I see what you just did there. I hope that's not a show and puppet thing. I hope that's not, because you make up 0.1% people who look like me in the setup, even in elementary schools. It's gotta change. Things gotta change. So, plus that. All these kids need to be represented, all of them. Not just one, all of them. So, if you're just putting this show on and make that look like it's what I think it is, but I hope it's not, I'm gonna be monitored. I've been through three secret things in this district. Three of them. And I haven't seen them not being done. I pay taxes here too, as well, so I'm gonna be representing the best way I can. I'm not gonna be quiet. Now, as I said, we got a lot of petty people in this district, a lot of petty teachers up there, too. And they need to be checked, too, and checked, not just sitting there to Dr. J for a cultural enlightenment. They're more than that. My people have been in this country thousands of years, and I'm not gonna lie about that. The natives have been here since the beginning of time, before Europeans decided to set foot over here. All you see is this blood drop, though. That's what you see, but you don't see all of it. I'm more than that, and those children are more than that. I present them well, there are no problems for me. So, plus that. And our new school was zipped from six, right up the back. That hundred-foot building down south, that woman started to do everything. It wasn't that. But it's you people as the leaders how to get this right. Those children deserve more than what they're getting. More. So, plus that.
Thank you, David. We do have one more. Usha?
Good evening, everyone, and...
Could you pull the microphone down?
I'm short, right? Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to be here. My name is Usha Singi. I live in Bloomfield Hills, and I have a daughter, Nisha, who is a sophomore at International Academy. I think some of you may have already met her. And the reason I'm here first is to tell you guys thank you. Thank you. I truly appreciate all the dedication, all the hard work, and everything that you do for International Academy. I'm humbled by your hard work. I mean, I know this is a very difficult job to be on the Board, and I really, really thank you, and I appreciate all your help. Having said that, I just want to highlight some problems of International Academy. I'm sure you heard some already, and I'm here for the same. International Academy is 43rd in the US ranking for high schools. It is third in the state of Michigan. It is a point of pride for Bloomfield Hills, and I think we need to recognize that it is known for its very high academic standards, its student integrity, talented students, and very talented faculty. Last year, we had a huge turnover of our faculty, and it is getting difficult for us to recruit and retain our faculty. And I think, I don't know much about it, but I think one of the reasons may be that we have payroll of 10 different school districts for our faculty. So, there is a huge wage inequality in our teachers. The same math teacher from two different school districts can get two different pay grades, and hence, it is easier for them to leave and go to a different school if they're getting a better pay grade and making better conditions. So, what we are asking the Board is to please review and see if there's a possibility of a change of this contract that the teachers at IA have, so we can retain these highly talented teachers and provide them some bonuses, some rewards, some retention. I don't know. I mean, I think I'm just throwing out some ideas there, how we can retain our faculty and not have this turnover, because it really affects our students' education. That's all I want to say. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Usha. And Michelle?
Good evening. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the chance to speak to all of you. I've read about you, and it's a very distinguished group of folks. I'm also here to talk about International Academy. My name is Michelle LeBeau. I do live in Bloomfield Hills. I do have a son as a freshman at the Oakmont campus of International Academy. It is an amazing, amazing school. Usha shared some of the credentials of the school, and it's really a jewel in the crown of this amazing school district. That said, you guys have done some amazing things for the school already, but there are some issues from an infrastructure perspective that really need to be addressed. There's a leaking roof. That roof is a health hazard to our children, and frankly, it's not a great way to maintain the value in the building. There's an HVAC inequity. Our kids don't use lockers. Why? Because in one classroom, they have to wear their coat and their gloves to get through and stay warm enough to take notes, and in the next classroom, they're stripping down to their t-shirts because it's so incredibly hot. Having someone take a look at some of these infrastructure issues would go very far towards helping these kids really grow to their best potential, and these are some of the best and brightest in the state. These are amazing kids that are bringing great accolades to the school district. There's also the pay inequity issue relative to teachers. I'll give you the example of my son, who's a freshman. He's on his third math teacher, and that was by November 1st, four weeks of which were with substitute teachers who had them learn by themselves. That's not the best way to take these kids and keep growing the amazing reputation that they're bringing to the school district. We have some of the best and brightest minds that I've seen on any school district on this Board. You guys can solve this problem if you put your minds to it, if you come up with a strategic plan on how to address some of these inequities, some of these fundamental problems, and how to bring this amazing school and give it the same things that the other schools in this great district have. I'd ask you to please consider it on behalf of all of the parents of kids at the school. We have faith in you. We know you can solve this. We just need you to put your minds to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Moving on to number six on the agenda, the superintendent's report. Mr. Watson?
Thank you. Just a couple of updates. One, today through Saturday is the Annual Kevin Song Equity Inequality and Suicide Prevention Conference. I've had the honor of serving on the Education Task Force and the School Summit Committee for a couple of years now. This year, unlike last year where I was president, this year I'm a moderator. I had the privilege and the opportunity to speak with Dr. Shairi, MD, Chief Medical Officer for Crisis Text Line, before her presentation, to start a conversation in how we can leverage this resource for our students. Part of the data shows that students aren't necessarily, especially young students or teenagers, comfortable calling the Suicide Crisis Hotline because they're a little nervous about speaking to someone. This, instead, is texting. In 2021, there were 1.3 million users of the Crisis Text Line. Of those 1.3 million users, over 400,000 were school-aged texters. And so, I'll be meeting with her again to see how we can leverage the Crisis Text Line as something that all of our students can use as another resource. Couple other things to update you on. Bloomfield Hills Schools has partnered with Oakland Schools to be a watch site for the National African-American Read-In on February 15th. So, hope to see everyone there. I will be there as the quasi-EMC. I'm not sure what my duties are, but I'm going to find out next Friday. The National African-American Read-In encourages communities to read together, centered around African-American authors and books. Also, Bloomfield Hills High School Student Senate met with the Black Student Alliance to plan Black History Month programming for February. The work with the bond continues. Happy to say we are still on time and on budget. Extremely excited for the fall of '23, when we are in our new configurations with updated buildings. Also, next week will be the first-ever Safety Week for Bloomfield Hills Schools. The purpose of Safety Week is to reinforce our safety protocols and systems as well as ensure that our communication platforms reach everyone within our school community. More information will be shared with staff and the community in the next 24 hours about our first-ever Safety Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. We'll move to number seven, the Board Intern and Student Advisory Council Report.
So, good evening, everyone. Lena and I are excited to give our update. But before we start, I want to acknowledge that Natalie Simone and Kennedy Stafford are up here with us tonight to give their update on West Hills Middle School. So, before we begin, in light of Board Member Recognition Month, we would like to take a moment to appreciate the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education. In the scope of our communities, good board members are often under-recognized for their work, for the work that they do. They are volunteers who dedicate hours of their time to sit through grueling meetings and making decisions that impact the future of our district. As school board members, you are elected by your constituents to serve the best interests of the community. In recent years, board members across the country have begun to elevate another duty, uplifting the voices of students and empowering them to participate in shaping their own education. Three years ago, the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education started the Student Intern Program. It provided students a seat at the table involving us more in the fabric of our district. We've had our ups and downs, but ultimately, this program has grown more and more every year, expanding the role students have and even giving us a voice during these meetings. We thank you all for the work that you have done for our community, and we look forward to continuing to work with you in the next few months. Next, we would like to provide an update on the Student Senates. A few weeks ago, Heather, Andrew Zupansik, and I went over to Bloomfield Hills Middle School to pilot our 7th grade Student Senate meeting. Like the 8th grade Student Senates, the 7th grade group comprises students from a variety of affinity groups, including Muslim Student Alliance, Black Student Alliance, Gender Sexuality Alliance, among others. The meeting began with introductions, followed by a cultural identity activity, and we ended the meeting with discussions regarding what these 7th graders hope to accomplish through the Senate and implement into BHMS in the coming months. At our next meeting with the 7th grade Senate, we plan to start putting the students' plans into action. Before we turn it over to our West Hills Middle School representatives, we would like to let you know that we plan to launch the same Student Senate platform at East Hills Middle School in the near future. And on the Student Advisory Council, those who will be working on that are Johniki, Erin, and Ali.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Natalie, in mid-February, Natalie and I will be launching the Student Senate at West Hills Middle School. And this year, the Student Senate will comprise of the 7th and 8th grade, and we will be having monthly meetings with them for the rest of the year.
Alright, so, can you hear me? I just want to talk for a second about the selection process that goes into this. So, West Hills does not have the same structure of affinity groups as the high school does or BHMS does, because it is a much smaller school. With a few exceptions, they do have a GSA, which is very well-run. It's very exciting. But, so, the way that we will be selecting students is we've given teachers a list of different, like, things that they should look for in a student to nominate to the Student Senate. So, students in this group may be influential with their peers, have an impact on the culture and climate of the school, represent a historically marginalized community, be active in social justice work, have ideas in and out of school, and more, right? So, we're asking each teacher to select four students from a certain period of their, of class, and then these students will be the representatives for each grade. So, this year, we will be starting with 7th and 8th grade, like Kennedy said. And in the, in September, we will be adding the 6th grade, and we will also be collaborating with No Place For Hate, which I'm sure, as you know, is a program that's starting up in our school next year, in our school district. So, with that, we will do, we will do split meetings between Student Senate and No Place For Hate in order to make sure that these students who are a part of this group are comfortable with sharing things, and because we recognize that students who are a part of the Student Senate will also be valuable members of the No Place For Hate group. Thank you so much, and we look forward to updating you more once we have our first meeting.
Thank you, council members. Alright. Oh, sorry.
We would also like to provide some information to the community regarding the role the student interns played in the Bloomfield Hills High School principal selection process. Over the last two weeks, Heather and I had the honor to represent students during the principal interviews.
Yeah, and we are beyond excited for Mr. Stroud to join the Bloomfield Hills community and would like to congratulate him on his appointment.
We look forward to working with him and getting to know him over the next few months. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you for all your time. You deserve to be recognized with the rest of the Board.
Always. Thank you.
You worked really hard. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move to number eight on the agenda, which is the update on incidents of hate and next steps.
Sure, thank you. So, the District Global Education Team recently met. The focus of the meeting was on our work with the Anti-Defamation League and No Place For Hate. Also, each building in the school district was given a self-assessment from the Anti-Defamation League to work through. Recently, Margaret Schultz, a Student Equity Council member, and Kira Codian, they co-facilitated unconscious bias training with Student Leadership Students. We're also working on a survey for students about equity and inclusion. I have a little follow-up regarding the police investigation at the high school regarding the racist threats in the bathroom. The investigation is still ongoing, and there are several documents that they are going through currently. Last week, Keith McDonald, Margaret Schultz, myself, and a lawyer from the Floyd Allen Firm, we met with the Student Equity Council to review edits to the hate incident policy. We are meeting again in the next two weeks to review the updates as we work to finalize the verbiage in the policy together. Also, just bringing some data to update the Board. in the policy together. Also, just bringing some data to update the board, between 11:29 and 1:21, there were a total of 20 incidents that were reported using the hate incident reporting tool. When we look at the numbers as far as targeted with regards to, six were by race, three were by sexual orientation, 11 were other. When we look at who was targeted, five were reported by those that were targeted, eight reported there was more than one targeted, five said someone else that was targeted, and two were by parents who said their child was targeted. Six of the incidents were reported directly, or, six of the incidents reported mentioned student safety. So, the Bloomfield Township Police Department was immediately notified. These were all social media threats that were reported using this tool that the district and police were already aware of, but were grateful for the students to make sure they put it in as many places as possible. So, that is the latest data. President?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Suppose we'll go around with questions, and counterclockwise, we'll start with Lisa.
Okay, well, maybe I'm the only one. Superintendent Watson, of the 20 that were reported, how many were, are, how many are the subject of an ongoing investigation still?
None.
Okay, so they've all been resolved?
Correct.
And the ones that were not resolved with the police, I guess, without asking for too many details, they were resolved, were any of those using restorative practice?
So, there's always seven factors considered. Anytime there's any type of student discipline or potential student discipline. So, restorative practices is always something that's going to be considered as one of those seven steps. So, it depends on the individual that was involved in the incident. It depends what exactly occurred. Again, you have to go through those seven factors, and so, we always try to have some type of restorative practice, and it may be additional things that occur within the code of conduct, but you always try to have that as a piece of it as well. And by law, it is required as a consideration.
Does anyone else have any questions? Howard?
So, the 20 incidents occurred over what period of time? I didn't hear.
November 29th until January 21st.
So, about two months?
Correct.
With Christmas in between. Do you feel that that is about average about what we've been experiencing in the past, or is this high or low, do you think? Are we getting better or worse? Or, I mean, 20 incidents is 20 incidents. I mean, we'd love to have it at zero.
What I think's really important is that if, if these things, when they occur, they need to be reported. And I think we've done a nice initial job of updating staff and students how to go about reporting it, and also using the OK to Say tool, because a lot of people don't feel comfortable reporting it. They don't want to. They don't want their name out there. The OK to Say tool does allow for that anonymity, so you can be anonymous. So, that's important to, you know, remind others as well. As far as, is it more or less? You know, I've been here now two years, and I think next week, the threshold goes for more days in person than virtual since I've been here. So, I don't know. I don't know how it was, you know, necessarily reported in the past. I can tell you before 11:29, there weren't any reports. So, there was nothing up until then. So, again, when these things occur, as much as possible, it's really important that students report them. You know, that's part of the process we're working through. And now, as trustee, you know, Van Gemmer said last time, that closing the loop piece, so that if you, trustee Baron, if you fill it out, at then, you're going to be called down to let, we'll let you know that it's been investigated and that, you know, we're at the point where we're going to close that loop with you, so you know something was done. So, you're not guessing that, well, I put it into the ether. No one's talked to me. I don't know what's going on. Maybe somebody saw it. Maybe somebody didn't. I don't know if they finished an investigation. Just to have that piece of closure, I think will be helpful for a lot of students as well.
So, with these 20 incidents, are we seeing, are they, from what you can determine, are they kind of random incidents, or is there some sort of a trend in them?
I don't understand that question. Random as in certain people are being targeted multiple times?
I'm just trying to understand, as we, well, put it this way, as we go forward into the future, obviously, if there are things that we can utilize as a board to, and as an administrative team to see whether there is additional instruction for the students to help them, you know, not have these kind of incidents occur, or things that our staff can be, you know, give professional development, just so that it's, they're just not incidents, but hopefully, we can use this as a learning tool.
Right, and understand the students that are impacted, they're impacted for life, right? When these things happen, please understand, they're very powerful. And I think it's important, at any point, maybe even more important now, a lot of the students I talk to when I go to the high school, they just want to be treated with dignity and respect. They just want to go to school and be left alone. Their life is already hard enough, right? Every person you meet has a struggle you don't know about. And I always remind people, please think of that before you say whatever you're going to say to someone. And we see what's going on nationally. In Bloomfield Hills is no different. But we need to find a way to better support our students, and that's what we're trying to do, because they're frustrated, and they, for the most part, they've just had enough, right? And this is for all students. They're counting on us also as adults to lead the way with everything, and listen, and be supportive. This is year number three of students dealing with COVID. You know, our seniors in the back, they had a freshman year, and that's been it. And who knows what's going to happen next year? I don't know. I read the paper today, and there's a new variant, VA2 of Omicron, that's starting to spread. So, what's going to happen with that? There's so much unknown. So, whatever we can do as adults to provide that stability and consistency and model that dignity and respect, so our students say, well, yeah, look at our adults. We need to behave like them. I think that will go a long way, too. That's for everyone that's an adult in the world, not just us, just at this table. But it's a difficult time to be a young person in our country, and that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any follow-up questions?
Just a quick follow-up question. So, Pat, the intent is to keep reporting these incidents on an ongoing basis and tracking them on an ongoing basis.
Correct. So, when it gets reported now, it goes to Margaret Schultz. It also goes to myself, so I'm notified via email immediately. And again, we want all students to be able to go to school and be treated with dignity and respect. All students, right? So, that's really what we're trying to get at. So, yes, it will be tracked. We now have the steps as far as what we're going to do, step by step, when these things occur and they're reported. But again, the hard part is going to be getting students, in my opinion, to report everything that's going on. It takes, honestly, it takes courage. You know, I think we've all been victims of different things in our life, and it's hard to come forward. You see that time after time. And for a lot of students, there's not a lot of trust that, myself and us as adults, we're going to do everything that needs to be done to move it forward or make it better. So, there'll be some work that needs to be done there. But I think we're making progress. I think we're on the right track, and we just need to keep moving forward, right? That's why your front windshield is so big and your rearview mirror is so small, because you need to keep moving forward and not always look back. You understand the history. You understand the mistakes you've made, and then you move forward, and you make it better as you move along. And I think everyone's committed to doing that, you know? No one wants these things to occur anywhere, in particular, in the community. We all work and serve.
I just have one request, and that is regarding the ongoing investigation. Can you provide, when there's progress being made, whatever, big or small, can the community know about it? Because I know that there are students that are afraid to go back to school because of that. So, there's a lot of anxiety around that particular incident, and they're kind of waiting to hear some kind of resolution. So, once, you know, if they're, if they're looking through documents, obviously, we don't need, we can't know what those documents are, but even if the investigation is closed, without them being able to identify who did it, can we at least inform the community?
We'll do that. It'll be similar to when I first got here, we had the Blue Point.
Yeah.
Right, happened in December. I came in in January. We had an investigation or whatever, and then we updated the community on what the results were then. I'll be working with Officer Miller and the chief as well regarding that, and happy to have the chief come back. There's no timetable, obviously, when it's going to be concluded. I appreciate the due diligence they're doing and, you know, what, you know, they're trying to do to bring it to a conclusion with the result of finding out who did it, which is the main thing everyone's hoping will happen.
Thank you.
I have one other question to think of before. Pat, shortly after the hate incident, administration decided to create a couple of new positions. Is that right? Can you give us an update on the recruiting and filling of those positions?
So, one of the positions, you know, is the quasi-dina students position. That was nothing new. That's something I identified when I first got here. I don't have any updates as far as how many candidates and things like that, but I can get with Keith and get something to the board as far as a timeline, how many candidates have applied. So, I can get that to you. I don't have that readily available right now, top of my head.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's a little awkward spot for this. Number nine is special recognition, which apparently is recognition of the board. Pat?
That doesn't mean, thank you. All right. So, obviously, January is School Board Recognition Month, so I have a little something to read. Whereas, the education of our youth is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built. And whereas, locally-elected school boards play an important and vital role in representative democracy, and decisions made by local, local school boards of education directly influence instruction in Michigan's public schools. And whereas, local board members contribute hundreds, maybe thousands here, thousands of hours each year leading their districts, whether it is by deliberating important decisions about curriculum, adopting policies, hiring top-notch personnel and administrators, listening to staff, parent, and student concerns, or recognizing outstanding programs. Board members always keep their eyes on the goal of student achievement. And whereas, these decisions affect the present and future lives of children, and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global 21st-century knowledge economy. And whereas, local school board members are exceptional people who tackle the enormous job of governing school districts and demonstrate to the students they serve the high character of civic duty and responsibility that all citizens should engage in. And whereas, Local School Board Member Recognition Month provides an opportunity to build strong relationships between the thousands of women and men who champion the cause of public education as board members, their schools, and the communities they serve. Now, therefore be it, resolve that the Michigan State Board of Education, Oakland Schools Board of Education, and the Bloomfield Hills Schools Administration, staff, and community recognize the many contributions of the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children, and declare January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Watson. Next up is the consent agenda.
John, I just wanted to mention, on everyone's place, is a little token of the Oakland County School Board Association's appreciation from, from them to us.
Thank you.
A little luggage tag.
All right, consent agenda. I didn't ask anyone to read this. I can, if anyone wants to volunteer, or if none, I will, I will read the consent agenda.
We're making Paul the surrogate today.
Consent agenda. I move the Board of Education approve the recommendation detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting of December 16, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the study session, January 13, 2022. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve disbursement reports. Request to approve resolution authorizing 2022 refunding bonds. Request to appoint underwriter for 2022 refunding of 2013 bonds. Request to approve National School Board Association membership renewal, Board of Education. Request to approve HR actions.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And we are to board business. First is the naming of elementary schools. Do I have a motion?
Michelle? All right. In accordance with board policy and overwhelming preference of the community, I move that the Board of Education reaffirm the following names of Bloomfield Hills Schools' elementary schools. Conan Elementary School, located at 4100 West Corton Road. Eastover Elementary School to be located at 2800 Kezington Road. Lone Pine Elementary School to be located at 2601 Lone Pine Road. And Way Elementary School located at 765 West Long Lake Road.
My second.
Let me just make an amendment, and the, the Eastover and Lone Pine is effective for the fall of 2023.
Fall 2023.
And a second from Silver. Discussion, Paul? Michelle?
Yeah.
Oh, does anyone have anything to say? Are we fine with these names?
Sorry, I did have one comment from last time from our study session, right? Obviously, we're calling, you know, East Hills to be renamed as Eastover Elementary. The question for the administration is, have you picked out a name for the Eastover pre-K building that it's now going to become?
Right. That is a good question. I think we're going to cross that bridge when we come to it.
All right.
The only comment I have is, as Paul read, the survey overwhelmingly supported these names, and that's why we reached out to the community, wanted to see what the community wanted. They wanted these names. I think we're having no discussion. No one wanted to say anything. I think we're okay, but we'll find out. All those in favor?
Just one comment. We had a discussion about this, I think, at the study session, but just so the community knows, what we are doing as a board are naming the elementary schools, but if there are other changes, if any, related to the mascots or the colors or anything, that'll be up to our administration.
True. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, B on the agenda is the second reading of Policy 8011, Vaccination and Testing. I'll just say some preliminary items.
I'll move. Are we removing this from? Are we not voting on this item? That's what I thought, too, Michelle.
Based on the recommendation of our administration, they said that we should pull this item from the agenda.
I don't know that we can just skip over, can I have a motion to remove it from the agenda?
Well, I think we should vote to remove the item from the agenda.
Either remove it or table it.
You have to vote on what's on it, so we have to vote either.
Let's remove it, Howard, from tonight, and if it needs to come back, then we'll cross that bridge. All right, I'll, I'll make the motion. I move to remove item 11B from the agenda for January 27, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, six, zero. Moving on to 11C, second reading of board policies. Keith McDonald?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the board policies as presented. The first reading was on December 2, 2021, and the second reading on January 27, 2022.
Discussion, Lisa?
I don't, because we've read them once, and we've already had a discussion, but I, I guess my suggestion is, if anyone has any questions on it, maybe we can have Assistant Superintendent McDonald come up, because I, for one, don't have them in front of me at the moment.
Does anyone need him to come up, or can we vote on it?
I don't know. Do you have questions, Howard? I think Howard does.
I have, I- I have, I, I put some comments in, and we got some responses on those comments related to two items. One is on page, on the bottom of the page, it's page 14, it's page 20 in the, in the package. I've brought this up before. It's related to, on the bullying, the line that talks about, or the sentence that talks about reporting. The recommendation from the lawyers initially were that the sentence, the superintendent shall report to the Board of Education on an annual basis all verified incidents of bullying and the resulting consequences that were imposed. That was recommended to, or proposed to us to move to the administrative regulations. I said that I, and I, my comments were that I think this belongs in our board policies because it actually is a responsibility of the, where it says the Board of Education, the superintendent will report to the Board of Education. That is something I think that, because it is a requirement that we're asking the superintendent to do, that he, that it stays in the board policy. The, the lawyers said that it really wasn't a legal issue. It could be either place. So that I would like to make an amendment to the, to the resolution that would say that we leave the reporting sentence in the board policies.
Keith, do you have a problem with that?
I just want to be clear, because the answer we got to your question, Howard, is that there's still mandatory reporting to the board because it's a law. It was just moved so that it's easier for administration to keep track of because it's where all the other reporting goes. So, to be consistent, it, it doesn't negate the fact that we, as a board, will still get that reporting.
It, now, maybe I wasn't clear. It's not to say that it can't be in the administrative regulations. It doesn't have to be either or. I would say it should be in both. One, it should be, we're, we're making a request, and then in the administrative regulations, it should also be there so that they know that that is a responsibility that they have to report back to us. So it should be in both places.
Well, the only, the only issue, and it's pretty minor for me, and I'm obviously willing to defer to whatever the rest of the board thinks is, it, it's making it kind of difficult for our policy service to update because they can't find all of the places that we've moved things to. So the farther we move from their recommendations and their template, the harder it is for them to come in twice a year and update, which is okay, but it's just going to be a bigger expense that we end up incurring.
But now, we got, we, we got some feedback from Kevin Sutton, and Kevin Sutton said he was indifferent, one way or the other. And he's the person who actually is responsible for it.
It was just a logistics thing. It's not a content thing.
Okay, so Howard has moved to amend page, is it 14, and all of these stricken items on 14?
It's on the bottom of, it says contents 14 of 20. That's the, the bottom of the page.
So all of 13 and 14, the red stricken items?
It's just one, just one.
Oh, just one sentence?
Just one sentence. The line that says reporting, the, the line that I read, one sentence.
He just wants to move that to policy as spoken.
Leave, leave it in policy, and quite frankly, put it in both places. That way you guys know and we know and cross-reference it.
It's all the same to you?
If it changes nothing, then we're located.
We can move, we can move on it, let's.
Yeah, Howard, do you have other questions that Keith might have to answer?
I do have one question.
So, you know, it's, it's a motion. Do I, is there a second?
I don't think we need the motion. He already said he would do it.
He does have, he hasn't, he's making an amendment to the motion. The motion on the table is to amend the current motion, so we do have to vote. He is correct. So.
Should we wait?
So somebody has a second.
You want to go all the way through and not, okay. So my, my second one was on page, let me try to find it, page 28 of 40?
Well, we have to do, okay, 28 of 40?
28 of 40. And it is a line that says, under purchasing, resolu, or, uh, policy, that says, quote, "However, the purchase of an individual item that exceeds the current competitive bid threshold, such purchase must be presented to the board for approval." Now, that was proposed to be deleted. And I'm still not exactly sure that wasn't coming from the lawyer, I don't think. But I don't, trying to understand the reason for why should that line be deleted.
I think that's also a, a law, so it doesn't necessarily need to be here, but, uh, the threshold, and the threshold.
The threshold's in the law.
Right.
That, that's actually how I read it, too. Because there is a law that provides for what the threshold is, and those do already come to us.
The, the idea here is that, yes, there might be a law, you're right. But for new board members or the community to know, they're not going to have the time and the expertise to know how to, you know, sort through state law to try to find this. This is an authority of the board that we need to approve certain items. I think that these are things that should be, again, it's one sentence. We're not talking about a lot of stuff. We're talking about one sentence. And it does make it very clear exactly to us and the administration and the community what the, what items would be coming to the board for approval.
Keith, what are your thoughts on this one?
Again, there's no, there's no, there's nothing that making this change or keeping it changes.
Right. See, the only thing that bothers me a little bit, Howard, is, it's, the objective of trying to streamline the policy and get rid of redundancy is a really good one. And I think by doing this, I know it's only one sentence here, one there, but, you know, the, the amount of work that's done to pare it down and make it less redundant, I think, is admirable.
The, the other idea, the idea here is transparency, so that we know, yes, you're right, there is a little, possibly some workload of keeping track of things, you know, down the pike. But the idea here is transparency, so we know and the community knows exactly what our responsibilities are.
To prevent confusion, we can actually reference, cross-reference the administrative policy number right here. So it's not, it's, so it's clear which, which number in the policy you're referring to.
I, I think this one, number, on purchasing, I don't think it's in administrative policy or administrative regs. I think this was just a deletion, is my understanding. It was just a deletion, right. The other one was a flip-flop places. This one was actually deleting.
My point is, if you're adding something to the policy, administrative policy document, and there's a number in there, reference number, paragraph number X.55, you can put that in parentheses in this document. It refers to administrative requirement 5.77, or whatever.
If that's.
If that helps.
If that helps, I, for this one, I think it was a deletion, so it wasn't a.
Just to make it easy for them, you know, let me just one more time state. We reference all applicable state and federal laws, and there's a reason it's ambiguous like that because the laws change so frequently. We have two readings for every policy change. Every time the law changes, Keith would stand in front of us twice to read policy changes that can be cleared up with that simple sentence, all applicable state and federal laws.
Both of these sentences have been there for years. This is nothing, I mean.
Can we go through all of the questions at once, and then maybe as a board, just decide?
Sure.
What direction we're going to go and just end it?
Those are my two thoughts.
I guess I can, I can, I, I understand what Howard's point is, I believe. And so, in, in trying to make sure there's a checks and balances with spending, keeping it in, from what I'm hearing Howard say, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, allows for individuals to make sure that we are not exceeding competitive bids when they come forward. As a new board member, from what I'm hearing Howard say, you may not know that is a fact. But to Siva's point, if you make reference to the other guideline that exists, that could be a possibility. But going back to what Howard was saying, if you're taking out the entire statement, you don't really know what you're referencing, what your point of reference would be. So, I, I don't see any point in removing it. It doesn't do any harm, at least to me, from reading it, keeping it or taking it out.
Siva, did you have any items? My only question is with regard to page six. It's something that came up this week. I've had the opportunity to do a lot of reading. And I, I don't know that the way this is written is correct with regard to electronic meetings and remote participation, so. I spent quite a bit of time this last week. There's a couple of things. A, I think that are required that aren't here, which is reference to military duty and medical condition, and then also reference to public participation during a remote meeting. And I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with the way it's written right now. And I don't know that we'll be able to fix it right now, because I didn't rewrite it. The way it reads right now is that a board member can participate remotely at, at a board meeting as long as they give one business day notice. And I don't know that that's the way the law reads. And I think we've got from two different attorneys saying that, that it's, they don't think we should operate this way.
Keith, you want, you want to comment on that?
My suggestion, it's because we have heard that this week. So my suggestion would be to amend the motion, if we're adding any of Trustee Behren's suggestions into it, to have the motion include that, as well as removing this particular policy number from the motion, which then allows you to still adopt the rest of it. If we have to come back to it, we can still come back to it. We've already done second reading on it. It would simply be just to vote on that one particular policy at that time.
So is that a first reading on that particular?
No, we've already done first and second reading, so.
On your specific listed ones, but is this one part of that group?
This is, yes, this is part of that group.
Okay.
Yep. So we could be a second reading at that, as a second, second reading at that time.
Your first one, Howard, was five, section 500. What was your, what was your sec, what was your first one?
So, John, you're saying remove it for now? Or John and Keith together, remove it for now, and then recreate when the law becomes more clear, add whatever we need to back in?
I would agree with that.
After reading it twice?
I, I think that's what John is getting at as well.
I think we need to rewrite it, and we can do it.
Well, let's remove it if it, if it's ambiguous.
Let's remove it so we can get everything else in, and then.
Especially if it's relevant, and if we're not going to follow it, let's get it out for now, and then we can put it back in later.
So, okay, so.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, so Michelle, you do have all of it, so you can read.
I, I don't really, I, I don't really know what we're doing. What section, what's your section number? This is section.
It's section 1002 on page six, the red underlined items.
So the amended motion is to approve the board policy 8011, oh, wrong one, sorry. Let me go to the right. I need to go to, I need to fix my glasses. Adopt the board policies with the exception of section 5003, page 28, per Howard's section that's highlighted. I can't read all of that.
Just the one sentence.
One sentence. And section 2006, 14 slash 20. And then with, reserving the right to come back to.
And just the one sentence.
With the one-sentence adjustment, and the reserve in the right to revisit policy one, section 1006. I think.
1002.
1002, sorry.
1002, in part, is being removed, I think.
Right.
Okay.
Because it, it's already in there, so we're taking it out and leaving it blank for now.
All right, is there a second?
In the amendment, right, right, so, second.
For now, it's blank.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 So now we have to vote on the.
On the amendment.
Now we have to vote, now we have to vote again.
All right, any further discussion on the original motion?
As amended.
As amended.
Vote to, yep. You can't say it as president.
What?
Second.
Second? Yeah, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Rebecca.
I'm so sorry, Beth, hopefully you got all that.
All right.
I'm sure she got it.
I've got, I, I wrote it down.
Come to us later.
Where are we at? 11D, approval of vision statement.
I thought we were tabling us.
Yeah, we're tabling it. I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Second it.
Any discussion on tabling the vision for this evening? All those in favor?
Well, I, I guess I'd like to know why we're tabling it.
Because I don't think we're ready to vote on a vision statement right now, especially this one.
I think it's best reserved for a study session first.
Correct.
And then, we'll, we'll have it at the next study session, the agenda, first thing in the agenda.
And also, we'll be able to, at full strength, because Jennifer will be back.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, was there a second? Yes. Siva, second.
Moving on to 11E, approval of 2022 internal board goals. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to table the internal board goals to have further discussion at a study session.
Do I have a second?
Second. Is that what you said?
Do we have a second?
My second.
Okay. Any discussions as to the motion to table?
I'd like to understand at this point, why we need to table this. We've, you know, over the, three board members over the last week or so have put significant amount of time into this. We've sent it out to the board to look at it. What is going to be the benefit at this point of, of tabling it?
Because I think you said it, three board members, and I appreciate spent a significant amount of time, but there's seven board members, so I'd like to have further discussion while, while the other four board members have time as a team of eight to discuss some of the items on here. I don't think, I think some of the items are great. I think some of the items we need to discuss further at a study session.
Can we go around?
Sure. We'll go, Lisa?
Okay, so we've been, this date's been set, and we have been talking about board goals. We have been talking about measurement tools for setting goals, and we're in January, so these are annual goals. I think we know to accept it. Furthermore, there has been no short of seven solicited emails going around to submit board goals to one person who's working on one-way communication only, which is very difficult to draft policy or goals when you have to do it that way. But it was done, and they were condensed. Everybody on the board had ample time to weigh in and then some. So tabling it further, I, I mean, I just don't see why.
I think that my, to my, my reason for seconding Howard, I mean, Paul's, um, motion is because I, I think for anything that we're saying we are going to do, I would like to talk about it. I think it's great that people sit down and craft things, but if I'm going to say yes to it, I'd like to have a discussion.
Well, I don't mind postponing the vote, but can we at least have, start the discussion? Because it was on the agenda for tonight. Maybe that'll get us closer to being able to vote next time.
Well, I think that's what the point is of a study session, is for us to have discussion, and this is focused on board business, not to have lengthy discussions. And that's why we have those working COW meetings.
Right, maybe we'll be able to get to the point of being able to vote, for all we know. We don't know. But, but by not even allowing us to have a discussion about it, we certainly won't get there.
Well, one of the things, at the advantage of the study sessions, is we have all of Pat's team there. And I'd like, if some of these items on here has an impact on Pat and his team, I'd like to get their input as well, in addition.
These are internal board goals. District and superintendent goals are where, that's the place where they weigh in.
Go around, and not back and forth. Siva, did you have any comment as to whether or not we should move this to, to the study session?
I think these need to be consented at a study session. I am open to Lisa's suggestion to debate them today for a period of time. Let's carve out a period of time, depending on what's left. And let's see how far we can get through those open discussion items. can get through those open discussion items.
And I would be willing as well. I mean, I'm not saying that we have to vote, but let's set aside X amount of minutes or whatever, and at least discuss it. Maybe we will get further, now who knows?
Howard, did you have any additional comments on the motion to table? Michelle?
The motion to table?
Yeah.
No, I don't have any other comments.
The only thing that I will say is that the, the current document, I like it. I don't like everything in it, but I like the way it's been structured, but I didn't get, I didn't see this current document until yesterday. Okay, so I do have a couple of things that I probably want to take out, and Jennifer's not here, and she, we decided that she wasn't to be on the phone, so I definitely don't really want to vote on it. I don't want to take things out and then have Jennifer be surprised about that. So I'm okay with tabling that. If we want to agree to a time limit for discussion of it...
Maybe, let me just make one comment about the process that this went through. Jennifer created a lengthy, I think, 28-item list and sent it to us two to three weeks ago. Over the last few days, earlier part of this week, I took that list, went through every single item, categorized them, sorted them, and came up with a brainstorm that I wanted to use the, or the way to organize it was to use the MASB governance standards, which we didn't have last year.
Yeah.
And then bucketed them into each one of the pieces, and I saw where the redundancies are, eliminated a few, and got it down to, what did I get, down to 11. There might be one or two, I don't hold me to it, that are, kind of weren't on Jennifer's original list, but in general, this is Jennifer's original list, wordsmithed a little bit by me, Jennifer, and also Lisa contributed also.
And Paul sent, you, Jennifer indicated that you sent suggestions, and she incorporated yours as well.
And she had, I didn't get it from Paul, but if Paul's got incorporated into Jennifer's list, then his ideas...
Right, and by the way, I just want to say, I appreciate what John's saying about not deciding when Jennifer's not here, but she's given us her blessing and has reiterated to me several times before the meeting, please, please work on this as far as you can, and if you vote, great, with her blessing.
And yes, I sent, and there's, I think, one suggestion in there, but this, as Howard indicated, was rewritten in a different format. Not saying I dislike the format, but there's things in there, as Howard said, that I've never seen before, wasn't on the original 28. So I think this is time well spent during a study session to discuss this, since, as Michelle said, or Jonathan said, we got this yesterday, which was rewritten by three board members, and there's seven of us.
It was not written by three board members.
Well, it basically, three or four.
Contributions were made by several board members, but it was not made in concert. So I think that that's the conversation that we're having right now.
Why don't we have the discussion on, or have the vote on the tabling, but I think I heard that we may have some discussion now, but not actually vote on it tonight.
Yeah, well, let's go through and see what people don't like so far, you know?
Because that'll give us another two weeks to make some modifications.
Well, we got it yesterday. I mean...
It's one page!
It's...
But that's not, I think that's...
But that's not the point. These are our board goals for the year. What do you mean it's one page?
I'm going to agree to something, I don't think...
We got it yesterday. I think we need to take time, reflect on it. We can't just sit and read it quickly, there's things in here.
But we've been solicited for a month to submit stuff.
But we got this...
But my whole thing is, we just had a whole study session. Why was this not something that was an item on the agenda at our study session if there was something that we really needed to talk about? So if we, I think that what we need to do is come together and understand that if we're going to work as a unit, we can't operate through email. We need to have conversation about expectations, and email communication is not a good expectation when it comes to making decisions.
I totally agree, which is why I don't want to waste the opportunity that we have to have that discussion now, because it's so few and far between when we can get together and actually have those discussions.
But that's what you're asking us to do today by making the decision?
No, no, a discussion, no decision.
No, I'm saying, the item on the agenda was to vote, and even in having a conversation about it, not having to really had a chance to read it completely and provide great feedback, I'm just going to provide you feedback from what I'm reading.
So, yeah.
And from what I read.
One second, Howard. So my concern is that if concerns or questions aren't brought up now, that at the study session, we'll say, well, you had the opportunity to talk about it, and you didn't say anything, and so I don't...
And I don't want that to be the case.
I don't want that to be the case either. Howard?
Board, boardmanship and board service takes work. It takes people to do work offline in preparation for meetings.
Howard, don't go there. Please don't go there.
What I'm saying is, is that this was probably not on the study session because it wasn't prepared at that time. We, number of us on the board, have worked very hard over the past two to three weeks to put this together. Should it have been on the study session last two weeks ago? Probably, but I don't think it existed. Last year, when we did this, Jennifer and I worked on it two or three months ahead of time in the fall. We didn't do that this year. It all, it takes us all to put effort in to develop this material. If things are not done by the administration, because they're our responsibility, then we all need to pitch in and help out to do it, such that we can then have a very methodical process of having the board goals on the study session in January, and then approved at the end of January. To do that, it has to be worked on in December and November.
I just want to make this point. This is, I finished one whole year as a board member. What I'd like to ask us to do is if there are things that are needed to, needed to be done, that we not operate in a vacuum, and only get into our pods of people that we connect with to make recommendations on what needs to be done. If there are items that we need to be addressing, we should all be talking about that at the table, as opposed to getting into our silos...
Agreed.
And creating documents for the rest of us to vote on.
Agreed.
And then soliciting communication and coming back and saying, well, board business happens outside, when we all have other obligations, and this is a voluntary position, and I think that the seven of us have done a doggone good job. And I am personally offended for anyone to say that you need to do more time outside of your, your, your work to do board business. Thank you.
I fully agree with Michelle.
I fully agree with Michelle.
Okay, so an amendment to the motion, move to table and, and discuss, not discuss. Pardon me.
Second, let's move on. Can we have a vote?
All those in favor to move and not discuss, or to table and not discuss?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I make a comment?
Of course.
Just like we've had administration put a calendar together, that Rebecca has worked with Pat to put together for events that need to go through during the course of the year, the board ought to develop its own calendar. So this is on the agenda for a November or December study session going forward.
Here, here.
Thank you.
I want to point out something, too. I'm all for streamlining the process, and one of the things that I think that we'll have to discuss is, you know, at least some modified return to some committees. That was on my, one of my board goals, because these committee meetings, sorry, the committee of the whole meetings, there is no way to streamline the, a jam-packed agenda and have a robust discussion. We left at midnight last time. I think we can help shorten these meetings one of two ways. We can return to some smaller committees, or we have to do some reading off, you know, away from the board table, or third choice, we just have very long meetings. But, you know, somehow, some way, we have to get stuff done. So I'm fine if we do it all at a board table. I don't care. I'm also fine if we do some in a board table, read some, some in committees, whatever we collectively decide. I think that's a discussion for the seven of us to have, though. We can't complain about how long the meetings go when we also won't do the work, and I'm not pointing fingers and I'm not saying won't do the work. Let me find a, always...
A different statement.
We, we don't have time to do the work, or maybe all of the work at home, and we don't want committees. I mean, but how does, how else does it get done?
Well, here's the thing, the document that is before us, most of us didn't see until yesterday afternoon.
No disagreement.
So it doesn't mean that people won't be prepared in February, even if we don't have our traditional COW meeting. It just means that people aren't necessarily prepared right now, and we could probably offline provide our critiques, and I've made, I did make notes of the things that I wasn't really comfortable with, so I wouldn't have approved this as-is anyways, but I think we can adjust those things offline potentially through one-way communications during the next month, and we vote on it in February. Our goals, our goals that we're attempting to accomplish year, you know, year in and year out, and so I think what's important tonight is to definitely try to get to Superintendent Watson and the district's goals, because they're held more accountable to those goals at the end by us, whereas we are holding ourselves accountable, and we know what these goals are. We've read them, we, we agree to some of them, so I think that even though we haven't adopted them, we're, we're working towards them, either individually or as a group, and I, I just don't think that we need to force the discussion tonight on TV. Howard?
A few things. One, I didn't mean to offend, that was not my intention at all. I totally agree with what Siva said in terms of laying out a board calendar for ourselves. The only thing in addition to that is we need to delegate to the president, whoever that might be at the time, to then hold ourselves accountable to that board calendar and make sure that, because it's often that you, we, you know, calendars get created and then get forgotten about, so that we have to make sure that that's the president's responsibility to keep us on track on the calendar, and say, in October, and say, ooh, there's something coming up in November, who wants, so during October, okay, who wants to work on the board goals? Okay, you, you, and you, fine. So next month, we'll put that on the agenda and have the board goal presentation. We'll then, you know, debate it a little, we'll make the tweaks in December, and approve it in December, so we can start working on it in January. But it takes a little bit of discipline to do that, and that's what I, one of the things that this board really historically has not had is this kind of calendarization and, and discipline that I think we could, we could use, and that really comes from the president and that process that Siva talked about. Excellent idea. So again, my apologies.
Thank you.
Siva?
I'll be fine. There was some discussion about moving away from a committee of the whole. Again, we've had three new board members come on. We were not privy to what didn't work before and why we moved away from committee of the whole, and I'd like to have on the agenda for the next study session, why did we move a committee of the whole? What didn't work before? And, and why are we jumping back to that now? I mean, we've had this for six months.
Yeah, just on that, I think, if I recall, the feedback was, Superintendent Watson and his team was, you'd have a committee that would, that would go through some of these items, and then you'd have to re-explain it again to the three other board members, so it was, it was time-consuming, so it's just easier to have. Now, I'm sure there are ways, and I'm sure we all can think of ways where our committee of the whole meeting didn't need to go to midnight. You know, I mean, I think in something that we probably learned from Michelle Harmelers, we make our point, you know, we either agree or disagree, but it's, you know, those meetings are not for us to try to sell on our point for hours upon hours upon hours. I think that's something that we got feedback on as a board that could probably cut down those meetings significantly.
I was just going to say, we had a really good example at our last committee as a whole, when I had said, made a statement that I had not heard the discussion that was taking place in, in your meeting, and you're like, oh, it, it took place in our, in our, in our, in our meeting. So I think that going backwards and not knowing what's actually the conversations is being had, we're going to have these same issues still occurring.
If I could just, I was part of asking for the change. It's making sure all the board members have all the knowledge, especially when it comes to the big pieces like instruction and finance and facilities, and we're having the same conversation tonight, to be honest, where people are saying, I just saw this, I didn't know about this, how did we get to this point? What's the thought process behind it? So that would be my concern as well. It's one thing, you know, as a small group that you're working on a board calendar, but I also don't want to sit at a meeting where, you know, Trustee Afros or Trustee Michelle, Michelle Southworth says, okay, this is what I'm being asked to approve instructionally, this is, I haven't heard about this, I didn't hear that part of the conversation. It's so important that everyone knows everything that's going on, so you can make the best decision. How can you do that if you don't have all the information? And at the committee of the whole, we have everyone on the team, so you can say, well, how's that going to impact elementary? How's that going to affect secondary? It's like the telephone game when you're younger. I'm going to whisper a story about a time against the trustee Behrens, it's going to be completely different. And so we wanted to take away that and take away working in the silos. Another thing Michelle Harmel asks us to do is, when we looked at our agenda, to stop piling so much on. We continue to try to give ourselves more tasks and more duties and more things to do, rather than, as she kind of suggested, what are the two or three things we really need to focus on? Student instruction, social, emotional, mental well-being of our students, and if we potentially just dive into that, which is also what our community is asking via the emails I get, which is, can you just talk about how you're going to take care of my students? How are you going to teach my student? How is my child going to get the best education? Why is Bloomfield the place my child needs to be? What are you doing for my child? Those are the emails I'm getting that people want to hear. I don't know, I can't speak for you and what you're receiving, but it's non-stop. That's what people want to hear us talk about.
I just want to say, too, thank, thank you, Pat. I think there maybe was a little bit of a communication gap. I read emails asking to submit my list of board goals, and I did. I didn't have part in drafting any document that showed up tonight. I saw it for the first time, too. Although it had a lot of my suggestions in it, I didn't put it in that format. I thought that's what we all, I thought we were on the same page with that. I didn't realize that you were, that the objection was specific to the crafting of a document and the indication that, you know, like some small group worked on it. All I did was submit a list, responding to lots of emails asking us to submit a list.
Are we going to take Siva's suggestion and put the committee of the whole discussion on the study session for a couple of weeks from now, or not?
I don't think so. I mean, I personally think we went to the committee of the whole for a reason, and as Pat articulated earlier, if we went backwards, we would create as many, if not more, problems, and I don't think it's something we should revisit at this time.
Realize, though, by not delegating to committees and have everything done with the committee of the whole, with the entire board, team of eight, and all of cabinet, in any legislative governmental body, there is sausage-making. There is, you know, give and take, and you're putting documents and thoughts together. By having everyone in the room, at the same time, everyone has to, you know, go through that sausage-making, as opposed to delegating out to subcommittees who can then come back with recommendations to a committee. So it's a give and take. I mean, people are concerned about the amount of time we're taking, but by having everyone in the room at the same time, yeah, it's going to take time to do that.
And what Paul said was, part of the reason things take so long is because people want one thing, and then they just keep coming back to it, and coming back to it, and coming back to it, well, the, the, the board has agreed that we were going to go to a committee of a whole less than, like, six months ago, and now, one person that apparently doesn't want to be in that format anymore is coming back to it, and coming back to it.
Who's that one?
I don't think we're, I don't think anyone is saying go to the old format, but...
No, I don't want to. I like the committee of the whole.
But one example, one example is, you know, when we get to, because another...
Then what's the board goal?
Another thing on the calendar, John, another thing on the calendar, we need to talk about is... about is the student intern committee.
Subcommittee of the board.
Getting student interns ready for next year. We need to talk about that at some point. Do we want the whole board to do that?
Are we discussing this now for a timeline or are we tabling it? This is kind of what I'm, the problem. I mean, so can we get back on?
This is clearly a discussion that needs to be had, and this is a robust discussion. I don't know why we would end it.
All right. So when I speak, I get spoken to like that. I'm just saying, you know, let's decide what we're going to do at this point.
I think we already voted, and I think that, I'm going to let Michelle say one last thing, and then we're going to move on.
If we can just have an explanation as to the format change. And like, if this is the format we're going to go with, if that can be explained.
What are we saying?
So this is a new, our goal outline didn't look like this last year. So if this is the format in which we're looking to pursue for our goals for 2022, I would just like to know why.
Would you like to answer that?
Sure, Howard.
No, not today. Please no, because I want to talk about it longer.
So you want to talk about it?
It was just one question that's to take it back to-
So we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to 11F. Approval of 2022 district slash superintendent goals. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the district superintendent goals listed numerically 1 through 9 for calendar year 2022 as presented.
My second.
Discussion. I had an order that we were going to go. Kind of lost it. We'll start with Paul.
Howard, how would I stand up?
Do you have any questions to comment with the guy?
This is the superintendent goals written by Pat. I'm fine with it.
Michelle?
Pat, do you have any suggestions to what we, I mean, do you want to say anything about anything on?
Sure. So I took input from the board, also reflected on the valuation process, and also reflected on the times we have our one-on-one scheduled meetings as well. So I wanted to make sure there's something from goal area five, goal area four, goal area three, and goal area two of the strategic plan. So that was some of the thought process behind it as well. And then, as well as adding in the math goal that we had talked about previously. So no, I'm comfortable with them. I've had the opportunity to talk it over with my team. And, you know, we're comfortable moving forward. It's quite a few. I know when we talked to Jay, he talked about minimizing and not having this many. I know something we talked about as well. But we feel these are very important, and we're well underway to getting some of these accomplished so we can move the district forward.
And my only other follow-up to that is number two. Is June a good date, a month for that to be completed by? I was thinking that that might take some time, given that we're already in to February, that having a goal for July, to me, just may give a little bit better timeline, just making that suggestion for you.
Thank you. I can take that back for consideration. Our thought is, we want to get the baseline data this year. And we know it's still in the middle of a pandemic, so whether we do it now, or April or May, the feedback's going to be the feedback, right? But then by doing it in June, we can look at what things we might be able to do, change, tweak, that would benefit our students, parents, or staff based on the feedback as we go into the summer, roll into the next year, and then do it again next June and see where are we at? Where have we grown? Where have we maybe regressed? What other tweaks do we need to make? How can we better support our students, parents, and staff, again, moving forward? So that was the thought process behind that.
And I guess maybe I was reading this as you were going to have the surveys conducted and all the information gathered, and we would get a presentation. And I just thought that that was a lot to be taken care of by June as opposed to the survey being done in June, and then the goal be everything be done by July, was how I was making the suggestion. Just throwing it out there to you.
So the way it reads, you know, we'll conduct a climate and culture survey to establish baseline data. We wouldn't be presenting in June. We could present probably in September, if that works for the board, some of the results. But put the results in an update prior to that. That's something we could do. But we wouldn't be looking to present right away that data.
Okay.
Howard? Any questions? Okay. I have a number of things I'll ask, one, and then have a go-around back to me. So the first of, I think, four items is, on the document that we were sort of accumulating over the last few weeks, Jennifer had put in a recommendation about the setting, you know, finalizing the goals between the board and the administration for goal number two, three, and four, and any tweaks we might want to do to goal number one. And that did not make the final list. So is that something that we are going to continue to work on in 2022?
So it's something we've continued to work on. We shared, I can't remember which updates, several of the different documents as far as HR, from the learning service team, communication as well. So some of these, for example, like, we worked with CSO, and they did a baseline communication assessment. So we're going to be able to take that and see if there are areas of growth and report out internal communication goals with expected outcomes. So we had a third party kind of evaluate what we could do right away, what's a little more, you know, medium term and then long term. As far as goal area number one.
What I'm talking about, these are the strategic plan goals. So these are five-year goals that we then chunk out year by year, but it's really getting that, you know, going back to 2018 and really trying to finalize those goals that we've been sort of hashing through for the last 12 months.
Right. And one of the conversations I had with several board members as well, including Dr. Matlow, was within this upcoming year, as we're still in a pandemic, unfortunately, making sure we're at least adding one additional item per goal to move forward besides the other work that's being done currently. So I kind of, you know, parsed it out as individual goals. I didn't think it was appropriate to group them all together. And so I took that feedback, and I made sure there was something covered in every one. Goal number one, you know, we'll continue to look at. Couple of things to keep in mind with that. You know, I know you're a fan of the MYKIP process, and one of the things they talked about not using was just the MSEP data. That's probably not the best to start with. But if you remember prior conversations, we also talked about having to start a point. We do a lot of-
Having what?
Having a starting point.
Oh, yeah.
We spent a lot of time talking in circles, over and over and over and over and over. So that's the starting point. Some of the other things we'll need to look as far as, how are we doing for all of our students? It might be FastBridge, it might be F&amp;P, it might be the K-5 district reading assessment, it might be the WIDA assessment, it might be common assessments, end-of-year exams, progress on IEP goals for individual students that are special ed, our NYPD six-through-12 assessment criteria, our PSAT eight and nine, our SAT, our K-3 directed reading assessment, our project-based assessment, our student learning objectives, our power standards. There's many more things to add, but at the same time, everything I just read on the list are things that the learning service team is looking at as part of the data as well. So I personally feel it's a robust list. I would feel it's extremely robust list in the middle of a pandemic. If we weren't in the middle of a pandemic, it would just be a robust list. That's my opinion.
So I think I'm hearing you're saying the items in what Jennifer said is integrated into the different pieces, into the other goals, so that you have subdivided that item and distributed it into the other.
So goal number one, or sorry, number one is, lines up with goal number five, number three lines up with goal number four, number four lines up with goal area three, number five, I put with goal area two, resource and facilities.
I'm not writing this down. All right. So let's leave that. So when, maybe you can just send us a quick little email with all that cross-reference that you just are going through, and that way we'll be able to track it as we go through the year. That'll be great. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, what are we asking Pat to do?
I'm just trying to, what he just read through very quickly, if he could just put in a little email so I didn't have to try to take notes as he was providing it to us. That's all.
Just a suggestion.
Yes.
We have the strategic plan with the five goals, right? Goal areas one through five. Why don't we just copy-paste that page as page number three on this document, and then it just easier to cross-reference, right?
I can call if you want. I'm not sure I know what you're asking. You want me to just, are you free Saturday? I can give you a call.
Sure. Sure. All I'm saying is, take that document, copy-paste it as a separate document. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
As a third page on here, right? And so it kind of answers Howard's question. It's in the same place. You got to scroll down two pages to see which goal it is.
What we've been trying to do for a few years is take, what we've tried to do for the last few years-
It saves everybody a lot of time.
Is take the goals that were developed as part of the, having Kay and Suzanne, and make them SMART goals. Make them output, you know, and results-oriented.
These are all written as SMART goals.
And-
Trustee Baron.
That's what we're trying to get to. So thank you.
Well, we are there. They are written as SMART goals. Every single one on the page is.
Well, these, but I'm saying that the, these are just getting us to be able to implement the strategic plan goals. These are getting data so that we can then have benchmarks to then start setting targets for where we want to be in the future. So yes, these are SMART goals for the fact of what we're going to do '22, but what we're trying to shoot for is where we're going to be '25, '26, '27.
But we can't answer that, no.
Right. So I'll paste that.
And this is the baseline to then figure out where we want to be for those targets.
We're getting away from what I asked of the board, which is to keep to this document. Are there questions or concerns about this document? And if there was anything you wanted to add to this document, I asked that you send that over so that Pat could consider it before this meeting.
These, what I'm going to bring up as we go around a few times, are things that were put onto the document a few weeks ago and are still there in the study session document from two weeks ago that are, that were not included in this document. So they were there two weeks ago and now have been removed.
Okay.
Chairman, how much time do we have allocated for this section? Because I want to make sure everyone else has ample opportunities.
Absolutely. Please go around.
Well, I allocated 40, I thought this was our most important topic for the night, so I did allocate 45 minutes. Doesn't mean that it's only going to take 45 minutes, but I'm always hopeful that we can stay on task here.
It can be earlier.
So I can answer Trustee Baron's question. So again, I looked at all the feedback, whether on the doc or text messages or my evaluation and things like that. I took all the feedback and then talked to my team, and then I wrote the goals. So some things are included, some things aren't included. Overall, there's nine really robust goals that really help us either establish baseline data we need or move our district forward, help move student instruction forward, help move forward the social, emotional, and mental well-being of our students, help finding out where our staff and parents are at with certain things, looking at the safety of our buildings, right? We're going to hire a director of public safety. And so if I'm a community member, I want to hear about safety. It's one of the things ongoing. Every aspect is safety. So that's why that plan or part of the goal is to update the plan and make sure that's presented to the community. Of course, you can't share every single thing about it, but that is going to be top of mind. And then I also included, and Trustee Baron, this is something you spoke to me about, you know, number eight. By December of 2022, the administration, working with the district's owner representative, will have considered the board's list of capital wants and needs originating from the Series II bond spending discussion, finalize prioritized capital needs assessment and long-term capital plan, including recommending the SINGFAM miller's rate request for May of 2023. I mean, these are big items. So to include anything else, I wouldn't be in support of. If you're asking me to defend the decisions I made, I'm not looking to have a debate and try to defend the decisions I made, to be honest. I made what I thought was appropriate and best decisions to help move the organization forward, based on all the feedback from everyone. I honestly could have pared this down to five or six and felt comfortable, but I included nine. And for my team, that's a lot of work for them, on top of all the other work. They can't even catch their breath because every time we think we're going to have a minute to talk, something else, there's another crisis that happens. And then what? Then they're working it again, nonstop. And I get it, you say, it's their job, they're supposed to. But at one point, do we limit what needs to be done to focus on the kids we serve? We continue to not talk about the kids, and parents continue to get upset because we're not talking about student achievement and their children and their social, emotional, and mental well-being. I'm not trying to provide a lecture. I'm just saying, it's important for me to share the feedback that I'm getting from the community, and it's nonstop.
Okay. Siva, do you have any questions about the superintendent goals? Lisa?
No, I don't. But I just want to thank you, Pat, and your team for making this. It is a robust list. Thank you.
I have one question of my own, and then I do have some questions that I had Trustee Matlow send her comments over.
Sure.
She was concerned, there were three items, and maybe these are the things that Howard was speaking about, that she had sent over with regard to strategic plan metrics for goal areas two, three, four, and five. And then there was, throughout 2022, strategies will be implemented, documented through MYKIP as presented to the community by the 2023 interim and 2026 final. She wants to-
Can I speak to some of them?
Yeah, there was three of them that got removed that she was concerned, and she didn't-
So as far as the MYKIP process, that's something that we're continuing to move forward with. The presentations are already scheduled. Also, by state law, it's required to give an update in the spring and have the segregated data. So that's already there and already going to happen. As far as adding additional goals to the strategic plan, besides what already we're working on, besides what's already in my goals, some of the things, as Trustee Baron said, we need some baseline data for where we're at and what we're going to do. And then we're trying to add some pretty big pieces. For example, number four, by December of 2022, Bloomfield Hill schools will develop an evaluation system for non-teachers administrators to the focus on professional growth. We don't have anything right now. And so for HR, that's a huge lift because that also has to be negotiated with those bargaining groups. It's not just Keith and his team saying, all right, here's a new evaluation tool, and we're going to give you an evaluation this year and move forward.
When you say non-teachers and administrators, is that paras and-
Paras, secretaries, right?
So not administrators, central office administrators or-
No, there's an evaluation tool that get evaluated every single year.
So that's at the, you know, in the building level for paras and sex.
Correct. But in the meantime, other goals as far as recruiting and retaining staff. Obviously, we're still working on that. We've shared at other board meetings what we're doing in those areas. But this is going to be a big lift for HR to make sure it gets done, and then to actually create an evaluation system that is going to provide growth. I mean, it's not, unfortunately, for Keith and his team, a short conversation to just do and have. And then you have to train those who are going to evaluate on the tool. And then you have to meet one-on-one with those who are going to be evaluated for the first time in their career in this school district about the tool and the expectations and what does it mean, and then assuring everyone that everything, you know, is going to be a good process, you know, it's not going to be a gotcha process. I mean, that in itself is a huge lift. Was there one more?
I think I share her concern about the strategic plan and not-
That's what I just addressed. She also had the-
So, and then the last one was the strategic plan for the IA.
Right. So I think we're putting the cart before the horse on that. The first thing we're doing is we're collecting the feedback on what's been missed, and that is part of the capital plan. Once we know what's been missed, here are the funds we have, what is it the board's looking to do? Then we can have a conversation about, to me, that would make more sense at that point to have that conversation than trying to do it now before the capital plan. Now, you could also make the debate that, well, that's going to be part of it. You could incorporate in that. I would wait to see what the board is looking for as far as additions to the bond, besides what's already been told the community. And my recommendation would be at that point, where are the funds? What do we need to do? What are other considerations? And if there are other considerations, identify a timetable when that information can be shared out.
My question pertains to number six. And, you know, I mean, with math, I'm not sure what increase math proficiency score by 2%. What that refers to is that individual students' score increases 2%? Or the number of proficient students increases by 2%? Like, the total number of proficient students that are considered proficient? Like what is, what does this goal mean? How do we measure it? Because it's not clear to me, I guess.
All right. So can I, can I work on rewriting that and send it to the board?
Well, I think we'd like, I would like to try to approve these, but if you want to.
Well, here's, I would need to reflect a little longer, but it being students' grades, first through nine, just overall. What is the overall score of all our students' grades through, first through nine? It's X percent. Is it 2% higher next fall than it was this year as a cumulative score for all of our students?
The average score.
Right. So are we, I guess my question would be, is it all of the first through ninth graders, their scores when they're in second through 10th grade? And so.
It'd be a new group of students.
Right, so.
It would be. So to.
I trust that you'll write it in a way that is, I mean, I think I'm okay with you knowing that it needs a little bit of work as far as.
Be more specific.
Being clear as to what exactly is increasing by 2%.
Sure.
But, but I'm not going to shut down the whole thing on that basis. It's just something like, those are the types of.
I appreciate that.
When numbers are in there, I like to try to figure out what exactly they mean.
Yeah, they'll also save time later, so I appreciate that. So if the board's comfortable, you know, and you do move forward with approving it, it will be based on the fact that I'll have a little clear statement regarding that goal. We'll still also have the segregated data, the data by individual buildings and all that stuff as well that we can share. But as far as a goal, this will just be something I'll clean up a little bit.
Howard? I just wanted to follow up on what John was saying, and thank you very much in terms of saying that you're going to be working on that, the capital needs for the IA building, the TRAB building. But there, the IA strategic plan that was even mentioned a number of times in the public comment, and we have PTIA representatives still in our, in our audience right now, has many, many different aspects to it. There's, they talked about the salary differences between different teachers.
Are we talking about their goals? Are we talking about, or we're having a discussion about the IA?
On, on, on a goal that was submitted two weeks ago by myself and President Matlow talked about a 15-year strategic plan for the IA.
Okay, well, let's stay high level here and not get into the context of minutia.
That talked about a lot more expansive items, not just the capital needs. Capital needs are important, but there are many other issues that affect a lot of different areas of this district, all kind of focusing in on the IA. So that's the one of the thing that we wanted to do is make sure there was a comprehensive study.
Trustee Kumar?
Howard, I think we ought to go back to the session we had with Michelle Harmala. And we decided at that time that the IA was a close second, but the strategic plan for BHS would be our number one. And we're still working through that. We're just in the process of setting up the baseline for that. Absolutely will the IA be a focus going forward? I think many members of the board, as a matter of fact, the majority of the board is probably interested in addressing that issue for the long term. But there's a question of bandwidth, and, and I believe this is a reasonable list for 2022. Please ask my take on it.
Do you have any further comments, Howard? I'm not trying to cut you off. I just want you to stay up here and not get into the context of what has already been said by the community members with regard to teachers. Let's just keep it up, up, up high level. And if you have any further comments, I'd be happy to hear them. Any questions for, for Mr. Watson, otherwise we can move forward.
A proposal was in the board, or the district goals. The superintendent decided to take a piece of that and incorporate it offline, not specifically in here, but not the other pieces. What trustee Kumar is saying is that there isn't the bandwidth. And is that the case? That basically we'll look at that for 2023?
So what I'm hearing is, so just my point, Superintendent Watson put together a detailed, smart plan. What I heard probably about 15 minutes ago is he's getting quite frustrated with being challenged on the things that he's doing. I think personally, we need to, if we're going to tweak a word here and there or have comments, I think we need to move forward and vote because I think him and his team are spent and they're getting very, very frustrated for us challenging what they're doing.
Well, no, this is not challenging what they're doing. The goals of the organization are the responsibility of the board. The board provides the superintendent with the goals that the, you know, we say what and the superintendent says how. Now, obviously, the superintendent develops a lot of the, the, the pieces that provide, that they're provided to us, but it is still the board's responsibility.
And in collaboration, yes, Howard.
In collaboration, team of eight, absolutely. But we are not, you know, the board has input into this whole thing. And if there is bandwidth issues and if that is the agreement of the board that, you know, this is not something that we want to do, but not this year, okay. If that's the will of the board, then, then we'll go that way. But I think it is the need.
As a group of eight, we agreed to it at Bowers Farm, as you recall.
Agreed to not look at the IA?
Do you recall what our priorities were for the coming year for the school district to focus on? As a group of eight, we agreed to a list of priorities. I'm sure Rebecca can dig out that list.
I remember.
So I'd urge you to dig out that list and look through that list. And then we said we were going to move some of those priorities to the following year, IA being one of them.
Right. And so to that point, number eight on the list concerns the bond. We agreed that we would discuss the needs of the district, which include the IA with regard to any, any bond funds that are available.
Sure.
I think that that's a good start for 2022, and I think that improving the facilities, if possible, and I'm not saying it's going to happen in 2022 or that's going to happen at all, but I think there, we've had these discussions, two weeks ago, we had the discussion, and I think a lot of the board members are on board with working towards some solutions, at least on the, the building itself. So.
I, to trustee Kumar's comments, I didn't remember specifically that the IA was lower in the priority list. If that's the case, I apologize, I don't remember that. But obviously, there are concerns from the community, and if that's something that this board wants to defer, and we'll pick it up again next summer as to something we'll look at 2023. Okay.
You keep putting us off. I'm sorry about it, sir. This building, these resting.
Sir, sir, the public comment was at the beginning.
Yeah, I comprehend that.
I know, but we're having a meeting. This is, this is not a time for back and forth between the community and the board.
Can I have one other totally different item?
Sure.
On number 12, you put a.
He only has nine points.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm on another sheet. Okay, number nine, where you have your PD goal, and that's wonderful that you put that on. I sent to the board and to you today, because I just reviewed this today, an additional tool that's available through the superintendent, the, the school advance system that can sort of be pieced out, a little chunk of it, which is a administrator professional growth plan. It's a one-page document.
Point of order. Why are we talking about?
What?
John asked us to stick to nine that we're on this.
Why are we talking about a recommendation from a board member on what our superintendent should do for PD?
Yes.
Why is that relevant to his goals?
Not on his current list of nine.
What, what I'm saying is, is there's a one-page document.
I think Pat knows his, what he should do for PD. He's been in public education for probably 20.
Howard sent him a tool that might help him. But Howard, maybe you can talk to him privately about it.
I don't think this is relevant to the discussion. This is why our meetings last hours.
If I can finish my comments so you can understand whether it's relevant or not. So what I, the, the process that the school advance system has is that there's a one-page that the superintendent would fill out himself, which elaborates a little bit more than just one sentence that kind of shows us as a board what PD he's working on to improve performance levels from where he was to where he is, so that when we get to the fall and we do the performance evaluation, we can see the growth in that area and therefore rate him at a higher rating because he has improved his, his skills and his abilities. So this is filled out by the administrator, whether it's Pat's administrators or Pat for us, and is something that is provided. We don't tell him what to do, but he shows us what his plan is. Because right now, it just says that he'll take four PDs. Okay, but we don't know what those are and how that will improve your performance in some of the areas that we might have said, you know, last, in December, that there were areas of improvement. So that's all I'm suggesting. It's a suggestion.
Howard, can I?
I don't want to speak for you, but.
Just real quick. Trustee Baron, thank you for sending it to me. I have some parents I need to get back to tonight via email that I promised I would get back to them. I guarantee you, I will look at your email and get back to you before midnight tomorrow with response. Thank you for sending.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
It doesn't have to be that immediate.
It's okay, I'll get back to you by midnight tomorrow.
It's a board goal, and I just wanted to expand upon it. It's the first time we've really talked about it.
No problem.
I mean, number nine says a minimum, and I can assure you that it's likely that Superintendent Watson will do more than four PDs, you know.
It's not accounted, it's the robustness. It's a one page to a one page.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote?
Yeah.
All right.
Are we voting with the recommendation of expanding on number six? Or are we okay with leaving? Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I'm okay. I, I think Superintendent Watson knows what, what I'm saying, and he can, he can adjust it as necessary. Because when we go to review whether or not he achieved that goal and it's not adjusted, then I'll say, well, I talked to you about that.
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. Well before December of this year, I will get you an updated, you know, verbiage, and then everyone will likely be like, yay, nay, still don't get it, not sure, maybe not. So we're not going to wait until then, no surprises. So I'll get it to you well in advance, you know, in the next couple of weeks so everyone can take a look at it.
Thanks, Pat.
I, I just want to say, really put the beep, and we move on. I think it's important that we send a message as a board, how wonderful this list is and how proud we are that, you know, it's more robust, it goes well above and beyond anything. I've been a parent for 20 years in this district. I know I say that all the time, but I haven't seen a list like this ever before. It's wonderful. Thank you. I also think we have to acknowledge that the issues with the IA, which we have talked about and talked about and talked about, are somewhat complex, somewhat not complex, but they do go well beyond just the repairs needed to the TRAB building, that the consortium agreement does create inequity in teacher salaries, it creates discipline inequity. We've talked about all of this before. I know you are well aware of it. I know you are working really hard on it. But I think point is, whether it's on a list of nine, we have to update so that the community knows that even if it's not on the list, you are diligently working, because I know you are. And anyway, thank you to the administration as well. This is really something to be excited about, I think, going forward. It's, I can't wait to share with the community because it's a very ambitious and well-rounded list, and a lot of thought and time was put into it, and I really appreciate it.
And I agree with trustee Efron's. I mean, this is a wonderful list. I was just making some, you know, putting some thoughts out there for some additions, but I think the list that you have is wonderful, and I really look forward to accomplishing all these things during 2022.
I appreciate it. But also, please keep in mind as a board, there's also all other things going on besides this. Just keep that in mind. Again, moving forward, I really want us to try to, as much as possible, I know we have a lot of things to do, to get back to talking about students and how we can support our students and how we can, you know, make sure student achievement is going up. Again, how can we take care of the social, emotional and mental well-being? You know, sitting at the conference as the moderator today and just hearing great ideas and knowing there's, you know, about supporting our students and about suicide prevention, that there's, there's more things we can do. You know, I talked earlier about the crisis text line and how we can potentially incorporate that to better support our students, especially those who wouldn't feel comfortable talking to someone, a friend, or calling the suicide hotline. There's a lot of things we've done that are good. I think there's a lot more that we can do that are good. And if we continue to leverage all of our expertise with the incredible staff that we have in our school district, we can really make a difference for our students. And I know as volunteers, that's what you all signed up for, so let's get back to really locking in and doing that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sure. All those in favor of Superintendent Watson's district and superintendent goals?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, six, zero. Final item on the docket for today is discussion of the superintendent tool. Howard, do you have, would you like to kind of just give?
I don't think I need to say anything more. I've sent you all numerous documents over the last number of weeks, numerous emails, numerous analyses that I've done over the last month. I'm looking for any feedback in terms of what you think. And I know Mr. Cohen is not comfortable with voting tonight, but that's really the will of the board in terms of if we want to move forward or not. Realize that, you know, that we are on like a year timeline, so if we don't do it now, then kind of either does it for 11 months or 10 months, if it takes us a little longer or else we kick it into 2023. So that, you know, timing is not critical, but it does, whatever we do or don't do tonight will have impact down the line.
I think one thing I do want to realize is that, keep in mind, and it could be the same board, it could be a different board, but in November, we could potentially have four new board members. So to change an evaluation system that the superintendent and his team are comfortable with, until we kind of, you know, evaluate, you know, where the board's going to play out next year, you know, may be too hasty. That's just one point.
This evaluation that we're talking about would be for 2022? So it would be this, the seven of us that we're doing it?
I think it's like a three-year plan from what you said to implement.
Well, it's, it's, the, the school advance process is a very robust process. It's a wonderful process. But it does, because of the, the robustness of it, the recommendations from the people who facilitated for us says instead of trying to eat the elephant all at once, you do it in pieces. So you do it over a three-year process to kind of, you know, move into it slowly. It's not to say that you can't do it all in one year. You can, but it does take a little bit more work on the front end. So that's the only reason. Also realize, Mr. Cohen, that the school advance process, first of all, this is the superintendent evaluation. So this is really mostly just between the superintendent and his administrative assistant in general, but also that the school advance tool is used by the administration within Bloomfield Hills. So this, we currently have three evaluation processes in this district. We have the teacher evaluation system, which is the Danielson system. We have the school advance system that's been here for years, which is by, for the administrators. And then we have a third tool just for the superintendent.
If people want to hear that, I mean, I'm not interested in hearing all this. If other board members want to hear the synopsis, you said, you gave all the information.
Well, I, I do want to hear it because we asked Howard to do something. We gave him a task and he spent an awful lot of time doing it. I think we should listen to what he found out open-mindedly. Howard, I, you did ask us to submit questions in advance. I, I got just a small part of the way through and ran out of time to be able to do that. What I was in particular looking for was what do you think the shortcomings of the MASP tool were? And what does the new tool do that the old one doesn't do? Or what are the, what are the, the possibilities through the new evaluation tool that don't exist in the one we currently use?
Could you also put in some commentary about that Collins and blah?
Sure.
So that we have the three.
So I, I spent a lot of time doing a two-page summary with 13 bullet points that compare the MASP tool with the school advance tool. Just, oh, by the way, when I talked to the school advance people and said, hey, can you, do you have a document pre-done for this? They said, no, we don't. So it kind of ended up on my shoulders to develop it myself. It's pretty lengthy. I'm not going to.
Copyright it.
Mr. Cohen, obviously. Mr. Cohen, obviously, he doesn't want to hear all the 13 items.
Howard, don't get that. Just read, just don't.
That was inappropriate.
Don't do that.
All right.
To say that.
So I apologize. That was not my intent. So to sum, I'm trying to figure out whether I can summarize that the school advance tool is a lot more DEI-focused? The school advance tool has a lot more indicators in it?
DEI, you said.
I thought you said BDI.
DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion.
Right.
It also, the, the, the areas that get evaluated, which is, you know, minimally effective, effective, highly effective, are not distinct. They grow, so the only way you get highly effective is if you've done the minimally effective, and the effective, and then the highly effective. So it's additive.
You know what, Howard? And I appreciate that, and I did read your comparison, and it was great, but what I guess I'm looking for, and maybe, maybe it's not tonight, is specifically some of the shortcomings that we all found from MASB.
So a shortcoming that I was talking to you a little bit earlier is, the MASB tool is very backwards-focused in terms of it, you know, we spend all of our time at the end, in November and December, and what the school advance system is, you front-load Claussen uses it, and they said that the evaluation itself was only about 15 or 20 minutes. Why? Because they spent, they spent a lot of time, they get total agreement upfront, and then they have quarterly check-ins, and they know exactly where everything, where the superintendent is all the way through. So when they get to the end, it's a no-brainer. They know exactly where they are, if they're positive or negative. As I said earlier, the superintendent personal growth plan is there, it's a part of the whole process, which the MASB tool doesn't have at all. One of the items I said in there was that the school advance system says minimally effective, talks about I and me. Effective is we and the team, and the highly effective are they and shared leadership. So it really is trying to empower more people in the organization from the superintendent. So it's not just talking about what he does, but what his team does, and then how he empowers the whole organization to do things. So we've talked in, over these years, about teacher leadership. It's that concept is ingrained into the school advance system.
Michelle, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had the follow-up.
And then there was another question that I'll get to later, after Michelle's related to the Collins and Blaha.
I think one of the things that we talked about at the study session was that you were going to go back and have a conversation with some of the organizations that were actually using the tool. And so I'd like to hear what those organizations said, that the benefits, and also going back to Lisa's point, were the cons. And then I think, taken also into consideration, I think Pat made a comment about the tool not necessarily being the best tool to use across the district, and I think that's one of the things that you were saying we will be using it for. So I wanted to just get that clarification.
So I let Pat talk about his experience in West Bloomfield, because I think that's what kicked off that comment of his.
Why I want him to talk about his experience in West Bloomfield.
Well, that's what I think, I believe, that was the reason why you said there were some concerns with the tool.
No, that isn't what my question was to you. It wasn't to ask Pat about his experience. I said his reflection was how the tool was being used, not his experience. Because I think part of your statement was, this was something that we could use administratively throughout the district, was one of the things you just said.
We are using it.
No, the new tool.
We are using it.
Right. So you were saying that we could apply this, we are using this tool to assess our...
Yes, right now.
And we want to use it to assess our superintendent.
Correct. Pat's using it to evaluate, Pat's experienced with it, because he's using it to evaluate his direct reports right now.
So if he's, he's made the recommendation not to use the tool, and, so I'm not really understanding if it's something that he doesn't want us to use while we're pursuing it.
So the tools are in place when I arrive, and I've still got a long list of to-dos. Just a brief reminder, on my 59th day, counting weekends, we had COVID. So a lot of things have happened since then. There are some concerns I have about the tool, but one of the important things is, there's so many different tools, and at some point, it comes down to how we train and how effective is it going to be. And I think a lot of times, it's easy to get into the weeds with a tool and have a myopic view. Really, it has to be holistic. It's a big picture. And one of the things about school advance that I debated, and continued debate, is some of the verbiage, works with, assists with, as appropriate. There's a lot of debate to what that actually means, what it looks like, and then the default, my experience has been, well, you know, Trustee Southwood, we had a conversation at this point, therefore, that would account for this. It's, sorry, go ahead.
I guess I misunderstood that we were using this tool, so that really puts a red flag up for me, because one of the benefits, you said, to using this tool was DEI. And I think we've all had a conversation over the year that I've been here, that we need to improve the district in that area. And if this is a tool that we've been using, it apparently has failed us.
So, well, so I think when we were, you know, doing the superintendent evaluation, I don't necessarily think it was the tool that we're using.
I think it was what we were trying to define as some of the parameters in the tool, which we all said we need some improvement on, not necessarily the tool itself. So I think from my point of view, maybe it's not other board members, it's, you know, I think the MASB, the tool we're using is fine, we just need to define our parameters better going into the tool, which would probably help, not necessarily retraining all of us on a new, by the time we all get trained on this new tool, some of us may not even be here anymore. So it's, I think we need to focus on what the tool we have and how we can make it better.
Do you have any question?
No. Not at this point.
Mine? I have a question for you, Howard.
He didn't answer my question yet, though.
Oh. Well, okay.
Going back to the original, going back to the original, the original conversation that you were going to go have a talk with other districts that were using the tool, what was their feedback?
So I found that there are two school districts in Oakland County, again, I haven't gone outside of Oakland County's borders, but there are two school districts in Oakland County who are using it. One is Claussen, and one is Ferndale. They are both very enthusiastic about it. They love it. The board loves it. The superintendent loves it. They would not, I asked them each, would they consider changing it? And they said, absolutely not. The conversation I had with Ferndale was just by text, it was pretty brief, because the person, the president was very busy. It was Sandra, who used to work here. But I did have a good half-hour, 45-minute conversation with Michael Frink, who is the vice president of Claussen. He loves it. He talked about that, the evaluation, the metric, or the rubric was additive, as I said, between highly, minimally effective, effective, and highly effective. He said it was easy to use. I asked, was there a problem when new board members came on? He said, no, not at all. Now, to answer, kind of coupling with that, with, to John's question, related to the Collins and Blaha, though, just to give you a little background, the law changed in 2015. Before that, we had our own tool. It was self, it was in a cell spreadsheet or a Word document that we had invented ourselves. All 500 odd districts basically did the same thing. There was no uniformity whatsoever. So there was a state law that required, that said that the tools had to do certain things, and that you had to put on your website a certification that your tool satisfied each one of those requirements. The law also said that you can submit to MDE to verify that the tool meets all those requirements. But that's not required, it's optional, but it's kind of a good housing stamp of approval. The MASB tool was never, has never been submitted. It's not on the state website at all. The school advance tool is there. Collins and Blaha, so let me step back. I think the school advance tool is very, very good, but it is involved. It does have a lot of detail, which I think is, helps to remove the ambiguity that we've sort of seen in some of the evaluation processes that I've been involved with over the last 10 years. But because of that robustness, some school districts contacted their law firm, which is Collins and Blaha, and said, this is very, very involved, and we, as boards, don't want to spend that much time. So Collins and Blaha heard that and said, okay, we will develop a more, we will satisfy the requirements of the state, but in a lot shorter process. So instead of having, and I'm looking for my statistics here, I wrote them down, I can't find them right now, I think the MASB tool evaluates on 35 items. The Collins and Bla, I'm sorry, the school advance maybe goes up to, has 35, but then there's detail beneath it that we can look at, and it's another 50 or 75 items to look at, to consider, but you don't have to evaluate on it. The Collins and Blaha tool is six. And they require you, they even say in the tool, do not do any more than six. So you have to only evaluate the superintendent and employee on six items, and then you have to come up with a, you know, effect, minimally effective, effective, highly effective, based on six parameters. That, so it was a, it was not required, but solicited by different districts, saying, we would like to have a lot simpler process, and that's how the Collins and Blaha tool got created. In their one-page document that Collins and Blaha, and I talked to the lawyer who put this together, the first bullet point is, you know, school district, client school districts raise a number of concerns about the state-approved tools, overly complicated, too many components in some components. It says one size fits all, which I disagree with, because the school advance tool is incredibly customizable. But they say it's one size fits all. They say it's a numeric approach, lengthy training sessions, and that's possibly true. The training is up to six hours. Now, I think some of that training incorporated the goal-setting that we've just done here, so we might, if we contract with them, might be able to reduce the amount of time that we have to spend, because we might have just done that today, as opposed to having to do it as part of their training. So anyway, so the, so why do they do it? It says, simpler and easier to understand. As I said, to Michelle's point, or question, the two districts that use it do not find it complex. When new board members come on, it is really no problem, the superintendent likes it. It's, so they have absolutely no complaints whatsoever.
Did you ask any district using, besides us, our tool? And a lot of districts finding issues, or it's just the way we're using our tool that we probably need to tweak? Did you do that research on the other side?
The, no, I did not call any other districts, but if you remember, we've had Jay here, and Jay is pretty restrictive, in terms of telling us, this is what you can do, and this is what you can do, can't do, as an example. The different metrics that we evaluate the superintendent on, it's, you know, 3% for this, and 5% for this, and 20% for this, and it's very laid out by MASB. The school advance system allows you to weight it any way you want. So it's a lot more customizable, and of the, I'm pulling this out of the air, let's say, 35 different metrics, if you think that for our district, these five are not that important, you don't have to evaluate them on those five. So you can remove metrics out if they're not important, or you, if certain metrics are really important for your district at that time, you can make that 20 or 30% of the evaluation. So it's a lot more, where they say one size fits all, from what I'm seeing, it's just the opposite. It's very, very flexible.
So, in my opinion, the predominant criticism we had during, with the MASB tool, was that some of us found what it was measuring was the existence of, rather than the effectiveness of. So is there, and I said early on, Howard, does this fix that?
Yes.
And you said, not really, but maybe more research into it shows. But I tend to think, like Paul said, we have the capability to do more with the tool we have, provided that we ask for the artifacts that are going to show more than just existence, but the artifact itself will indicate effectiveness. And I think what Pat said, which was, you know, for me, mid this discussion, kind of a lightbulb moment, was, are we looking for a tool to do something that no tool will do, because that's not really the job that we're supposed to be measuring? In other words, we aren't supposed to measure the effectiveness of each and every component of everything that the superintendent does. We measure the effectiveness of student achievement. How we get there is way outside of our expertise, and we shouldn't really be micromanaging in that respect. So, you know, at this point, personally, before you embark on more work, because it is an enormous amount of work, and I appreciate it a lot, I think we should put it on hold so that you don't do work for nothing, before we decide if we necessarily want to prioritize this, because I do think we can come up with some metrics and some indicators that will be more informative, based on what we ask for, to be put into the artifact file.
So, again, I have the most experience with the MASB tool, in that I've been using it for six or seven years. And I didn't understand fully what its, all its capabilities, not capabilities, but what its rules and regs, because you only do it once a year. But as I've learned, as I've used it more and more over these years, I see the limitations of it. Also, in this industry of superintendent evaluations, there isn't a method to really learn what the different tools are. I had to do a huge amount of research myself by looking, calling MDE, looking on their website, calling these lawyers. The weird, the crazy thing is, we go to an annual conference at MASB, and the architects are there, and the construction people are there, and all these other, these guys aren't even there. So you really have to look to find this stuff, which is very, very strange. Again, you can take my advice or not, but given my analysis, and also, if you, before you, you know, make any, and I agree with Paul, let's kick this down for a month. Absorb it all. Let's get Jennifer in the room also. But I would say, look at the spreadsheets, or the two-page spreadsheet that compared each one, I mean, I just picked, I cherry-picked out of a few of them, but look at it all. And then there was an email I sent, and it's in the, in Novus, that kind of went through my process of what I did, and another thing, if you would like, Michael Frake from Claussen would be thrilled if he could come to the podium here and be able to answer any questions you have, because again, I have no experience, I'm just doing what I read. But Michael's been using it for six or seven years. My suggestion is, with your permission, I will call Michael, tell him when our study session is, and if he's available, which hopefully he is, he would come to the meeting and answer any questions you would have.
If we're going to do that, can we also find a board member that likes the MASB model, and a board member that likes the Collins and Blaha model, and any other board member that... that likes a different model? I don't know a lot about the Collins and Blaha model.
As far as I know, there are only those three. There's a fourth one that's on the, on the MDE website?
The link works. I checked it. It should be operating now.
Okay, it's, I'll have to look. The link is broken.
There could be others, but to be honest, I tried to do some research, but between safety and security, instruction, DEI and COVID, I've tried to spend most of my hours looking at those things.
I've spent, you know, probably a whole man week doing all this. If you can find an organization, another district that is using the MAS B tool that they, that likes it, because you have the whole list of all, I don't have that, you have the list of all the districts. If you or any other board member wants to take on that assignment, that would be great.
I'll share with the board the most up-to-date list that we have regarding what districts are using MAS B, what districts are using Collins and Blaha. For Oakland County, all is what I have right now. If you're looking for a statewide comparison, that would take you some time.
No, no, no. I think that's why I limited it to Oakland County.
There's over 500 districts that would need a call.
Because the other thing with Oakland County, we know the people. We know all the, the school board members because of the OCSBA. So they're friends.
So how would fundamentally us changing to a new system?
Could you go to the microphone?
How would fundamentally us change your new system? How would that impact students ultimately, except taking more time out of what we need to do for students to train and learn this new system?
The most important person in the entire district is the superintendent.
Okay.
So, having, as we evaluate, one of our major responsibilities.
But our staff are the most important people in our district.
But I'm saying from the board, the one employee, the one employee that we have is the superintendent. Our primary responsibility, our responsibility, above all else, is hiring the superintendent and evaluating the superintendent because he then has 1,000 people who are wonderful people, but he is the one who manages the entire process. So that making sure that we, to the public, have as robust a process of understanding what the wonderful things that our superintendent is, does, but also looking to see where there could be opportunities of improvement. That's for any employee.
Right.
Evaluation, whether you're doing it in superintendent or you're doing in a, in a for-profit organization.
Howard, all right, I think it's a given, evaluating the superintendent's an important job and it's one that does affect student achievement because it's how we hold the district accountable.
Correct.
But I also think that before you embark on any more research or before we relinquish precious committee of the whole minutes, bringing in other people to speak to us, we really do have to set priorities. So, you know, we weren't able to accomplish that tonight? Okay, fine, but let's set a priority and like you suggested, I don't know who else, maybe that was Paul, put this on the shelf for a month or so. I know that you have a timeline in your head about when it needs to be implemented, but for me personally, I think because we have familiarity and because we have room to work with the tool we already use to make it more specific and we have a lot of leeway with the artifacts, a lot. So I think, I don't want you to embark on more research because, not right now, because I would feel bad if you put a lot of time into it and we never got to it. So that's my point.
I think, I think your suggestion is excellent, that we defer any more conversation of this or any more research on this until the next study session, have another conversation, look at the material I've sent out, ask me any questions. If we want to get, as I said, Michael here, we could have him come to the end of February meeting as opposed to the study session, if you wanted to ask him questions then, whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, let's not contact anyone right now. I think, I'm, I'm interested in this new, new thing, but it doesn't necessarily have to be for this year. Potentially, we could do two things at once where we try to figure out how to make the tool we're using better and think about switching tools at the same time so that at the end of this year, we do a better job of using the tool that we have and Pat's more prepared for, if we do switch to a new tool, we've had more time to adjust because we, we kind of rushed through this. I mean, and, and that's where we're at. Michelle?
I just have one question. Prior to Pat, what tool did you use?
We had an Excel sheet where.
No, prior to Pat.
Prior to Pat.
Prior to Pat.
MAS B. We've been using MAS B since 2015.
And so, were these not questions you had before or are you just having these questions now? I just, I don't understand.
Let me give you the history.
No, no, no history.
No, we don't want the history.
I don't want history. I just want a quick response.
We don't need the history.
One board member did the analysis. It was Cynthia Vanoyen. She came to us and said, she looked at different systems, again, the state.
No, just, just.
And Cynthia Vanoyen said, use this.
Michelle, answer the question. It was fine before probably the last year and a half. It was fine.
No, it was not.
According to you.
Paul thinks it was.
Yes, according, and then according to you, it was fine. So really, we, difference of opinion.
All right, I'm going to call for an adjournment.
No, I do have one question. I know you want to adjourn, but I really want to ask this question before we leave. And I know this is not on the agenda and I know adjournment is the last thing we talk about. We have a committee of a whole meeting and the last thing we do is we go through our items and then we show up to a meeting and we don't know what we're going to talk about until we get an agenda. When do we ever set the agenda for the committee of the whole?
It's set up, we're supposed to set it, I thought we agreed to set two agendas. So the agenda for this meeting and then the agenda for the committee of the whole was supposed to be set, I mean, at the, it's always done.
I, I'm reminding us that we don't have, we didn't have two agendas, we should be two agendas ahead is what I'm saying. So technically, we should already know what we're talking about on the 10th.
Well, I think the 10th is the quote-unquote retreat where.
At the last study session.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But the point I'm making is that when we think about the practices, and I just want to put this out there, so we'll know that we should always be an agenda ahead. Right now, we're an agenda behind. So just when we get to our, our planning meeting for the 10th, let's think about trying to be an agenda ahead.
Yeah.
So we should already know what we're going to be talking about on the 10th. And do you know what we're talking about on the 10th? No.
It was discussed at the last committee of the whole.
Tell me.
I think my understanding to Siva's point is when we were at the farm, right, we put together the whole thing.
No, no, no. I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
No, it's a great question because we should leave this meeting on the same page.
Everybody should rock out this meeting and we should all know what we're talking about on the 10th. So when we show up, none of us is saying what's on the agenda. I just found out this today.
Why don't we go around here and make sure that they understand what's on the agenda?
It's a good point. I don't know what we're talking about.
I do know that we agreed to a retreat and that we were going to talk about something very specific, but.
I thought we talked about the items of the agenda for the 10th at the last study session, right?
Yeah.
Saying this would be the agenda for the next study session, maybe not.
And I, my understanding is that we were going to talk about our policy and our BOP and that you were going to lead this meeting and that we were going to get those documents. We were going to add things that are needed to them, eliminate things that aren't, change things that are in them so that they're consistent with all of the other work and that they would be consistent with our own board goals, but we didn't finish those, so we may have to revisit that. But you're right, but you're right.
That's only one thing, but I've also asked several of us and we've all given a different response. And then today, we also talked about the vision, which we put that on the agenda as of today.
We were going to talk about the.
Board goals.
Board, responsible, officer responsibilities.
Officer responsibilities, yeah, we're almost all there. So what I, what I would love for us to do, and I, and this is because I want to make sure that, you know, I know we got in a few things before, that when we show up on the 10th, we're, we all have work schedules. I'm a planner, so I have to plan into my time what I have to do. And so the day before doesn't work for me always. So Lisa did, I did connect with Lisa and I know she knows all the things that you all just said, and so we kind of know what we're going to talk about. So what I like to do is send an email after tonight's meeting, just to make sure we're all on the same page as to what we're supposed to be talking about. If there are things that we think are going to take too long, then we need not to have them on the, on the agenda. Because we don't need to be together till midnight.
Correct. The last, to Lisa's point, the 210 meeting is only going to be policy and BOP discussion. And if we're going to add on the vision, to Michelle's point, we're going to add on the vision and board goals and this, then we might as well just get it caught. I mean, I'm just saying.
I agree 100%. I'm really happy you brought that up. Paul, yeah, 100% because when we talk about officer duties and perhaps, you know, redefining them, that falls under the BOP. So excuse me if I was being a little bit too general with my, with.
No, I know.
But I did understand that we were doing that. But yeah, both of, both you and Paul are 100% right. I mean, when we start to bump things like the vision and we're going to have a super long meeting or we're not going to get that done and then we have to keep pushing it back. And it is hard to plan two meetings in advance, let alone a calendar year, when we keep doing stuff like that. So maybe before we leave tonight, we can agree that whatever got tabled from tonight, I don't know where to put it, and I hate to say it, but it really can't go on the February 10th meeting or we're going to run into the same problem again. And thank you for pointing that out too, because that's really a great point. If we're going to be able to manage the workload, you know, I felt it myself, something it does have to give somewhere, the length of the meetings or the number of the meetings or the length of the agenda, something has to give.
Or the length of the debate.
Michelle?
Or the time given to raise each point.
Or all of the above even.
I do think we need, I mean, I think we do need to discuss the board goals. I think that Howard has done a good job of getting them close to somewhere, okay? I get, I get, right.
So if we're only talking about officer duties and the BOP, we could talk about board goals. So we could allocate time and make sure we can, if that's, if that's what you want to do, we can talk about board goals.
Okay.
So those three things.
I think we can leave vision off. We technically have a vision.
Oh, in elections.
So, just on that point, if those are the two items that we're going to focus on and that's board-related, does, obviously Pat needs to be there, but does Pat's team, ultimate team, need to be there?
Yeah, I think we were, we had said, Paul, they don't because it's a retreat.
I think that's why we called it a retreat.
It'll just be the eight of us.
Yeah.
Not able to attend either.
Yeah, it's just the eight of us.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And are we doing it in this room or are we going to go off to the farm and the nature center?
We can do it right here.
Okay, very good.
All right, so, but we're in agreement, again, that the agenda has one item and now board goals discussed, if not voted on, but at least we're going to discuss them then. Okay.
And then the other items will be on the committee of a whole for the next meeting, more from what I'm understanding.
Right.
The vision and all the other things that we tabled for today.
Those will be on which meeting now?
The next committee of a whole.
In March? So we're saying we're not going to do any of those in January, in February?
This is what I'm trying to make sure we're having.
Yeah, that's why she brought it up. I think that's why, I'm very happy to not leave here until we get that clear.
So how many, so we keep kicking some of these things month after month after month down the road?
I mean, some things.
Yes?
Yeah, I don't know.
So, but in two weeks.
At least now you know. So when we come prepared, we can have this meeting, we are going to leave before 10 o'clock because we came in, we conquered, and we're going to leave on time. So if we do the same thing on the 10th and we do the same thing in March, we'll get things done. So it won't get tabled and keep getting kicked down the road. Are you comfortable with that?
Right, we're going to accomplish that.
I'm comfortable with whatever the board's comfortable with.
But in two weeks, I think the third thing that we should have on the schedule is just making sure that, like we did here at the end today, making sure that our schedule for the next meeting or two are, you know, we have that discussion at the end.
I love that, as a standing item, before we leave a meeting to go over that. That's excellent, yeah.
Thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome. I was just sitting there like, now what are we talking about?
Good.
Everyone good?
And I think it's.
Can I say one more thing? John, I really liked the timed agenda as well.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. I think we need to lock, just like Lisa said, and to the, you know, your, our email, great idea, say, here's what you've got allotted for this topic. We can't go over and, and at least the best extent possible. And we really need to be aware of the time we spend talking.
Yes.
And hold ourselves accountable to that three-minute limit that we all set ourselves back at Thowers Farm.
Right. We have to remember what we're talking about because sometimes when you get to talking, it expands, but we have specific things we're working on each time and we have plenty of time we can talk offline and do those things. So with that said.
I moved to vote because we have to still vote on Howard's, that we tabled Howard's.
No, it was not, it was not a motion. It was not intended to be a motion. It was at our option and we decided not to.
Howard, thank you again. That was an enormous amount of work.
That was a lot of work.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.